We're going to call our council meeting for Tuesday, June 4th, to order. Please let the record reflect that Mayor Debbie Nash King and Councilmember Nina Cobb We're going to begin with our presentations. We've got five minutes, two times each. Our question and answer will be held at the end of each presentation. We're going to start with Hill Country Transit, the HOP, Mr. Raymond Suarez.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. We're here requesting funding for our FY '25 budget year. And as an introduction, we are moving the Transit District from fixed route service predominantly to microtransit services with a regional connector that's going to connect the city, all five cities, and Fort Hood together. We're really excited about this. We should launch service on July 16th. We're about a month behind, primarily because it was a recall on vehicles. So we're in the process of acquiring the vehicles. They're already coming in, and they'll be labeled. And so we're going to launch service. But before I get into microtransit and the budget request, I just wanted to share with the council that we piloted the service. We started it already on Fort Hood, and it's been doing exceptionally well, high levels of ridership. Microtransit is using smaller vehicles as opposed to a large bus. It carries between 10 and 14 passengers, depending on the configuration, whether they're wheelchair-equipped or not, and a mixed use of fleet. But they're smaller vans. They operate with a software app on a phone, and they basically cover the entire base. And it's been working extraordinarily well. And I think they're really excited about the ridership on the base. And I'm not sure. Here we go. It was a little bit delayed. The benefits of this transit system also provides a tremendous amount of rich data. Here's a sample of some of the data that we get. Just in the first couple of months, we've already carried 27,000 rides, which is, if we extrapolate that out and the growth rate, we're looking at carrying over 200,000 passengers on base. They originally requested, when we asked them, what's the value proposition? How would you be? What does success look like? How many passengers would you think would be successful for the entire year? And they said 30,000 passengers, and we've already carried 27,000 just in the first two months. And this is with approximately 25,000 folks on the base on any given day. But you can see average boarding's of 6.7 per vehicle. The average review or satisfaction index is 97%. On-time performance, typically on transit systems across the country, you'll see about an 80% to 85% on-time performance. That's, a lot of times, that's because of traffic and other conditions. As you can see here, we're hitting 99.2% on-time performance with the service, and overall, it's been working extraordinarily well. And we anticipate that this service, when we launch it in all of our member cities, it will have similar results. Just to ground the conversation about what we're doing, so these are the existing routes in the Colleen urbanized zone, which includes Copper's Cove, Harker Heights, as well as Colleen. You can see the different routes as they wind through the cities to pick people up. They operate on about an hour frequency. And then you can see kind of this gray puffy cloud around it. That is the complimentary paratransit, or ADA, American with Disabilities, service, which is typically provided with a cutaway. That is a complimentary service. So if you run fixed route by FTA guidelines, you have to provide a service for paratransit. But the folks that can ride that are only qualified paratransit folks. So what we're doing is we're combining these two types of services into one service that'll run literally in all of the same area. We've actually extended the service area a bit. But it will combine ADA, non-emergency medical, general purpose trips, so that everybody has a quality and access, the same type of service, which is kind of the Holy Grail of transit. So we believe that this is a much fairer way, a more consistent way, more accessible way to deliver transit service. So a lot of these lines that you see on this page, for the exception of the gold line, are going to be replaced with microtransit. And we will connect it to our regional connector, which will run along I-14, connecting all five cities. And there will be zones that we will use to connect the different locations to the regional connector. So in this rendering, the blue line is a regional connector. There will be minimally five mobility hubs where each one of these zones, if you will. And this is just depicted as an example of how vehicles will be spread out geographically. They'll be able to move from one area to the other, so there's really no borders. There's nothing that says four buses can't, you know, one of the buses can't cross one of those depicted lines. It's just to show distribution of vehicles across the urbanized zones. And then everywhere where you see this little blue dot is where they'll be initially where we'll have mobility hubs. We'll likely add at least two in Colleen, so that we don't have to go too far to transfer somebody from a microtransit zone over to the regional connector. The regional connector will run every 30 minutes. Today, it's about two hours, and you have to transfer at least once to get on a bus. So significantly higher value proposition for the service as we move forward. I wanted to annotate that on the right side, top right side, you can see there's 21 buses for the urbanized zone with minimally five, likely seven, mobility hubs where there'll be connection opportunities. Similarly, in the Temple UZA, we'll have three buses assigned to the Belton area with interaction or connection point at the mobility hub that already exists, and then 15 buses or vans, if you will, with five hubs as well for connections to the regional hospitals, downtown Temple, and other destinations along the route. There's a bit of a delay on the, and, okay. So from a, what are we delivering today versus the enhancements? Today, we offer predominantly fixed route bus service with one regional connector. We currently offer 12 hours of service. We're moving to 14 hours of service, so there's an improved value proposition there. The connector route, as I mentioned before, it's one route, roughly runs 22 miles, but it's two different buses. If you miss your connector, you're going to be waiting a while, or connection between the two routes. It takes about two hours to get across the service area under the new structure. It'll take, it's 37 miles. It'll take probably 40 minutes to get from end to end. The number of passengers that we're currently carrying with all of our fixed route service is about 8.6. The national average, where planners, transit planners, tend to go in and restructure bus routes, is when they're under 10 passengers per hour. So the majority of our routes are underperforming, as I mentioned the last time we were here with regard to a budget request. And we're anticipating roughly 10 passengers, which is much more efficient, and that's the minimum. We just don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. The frequency, we're expecting the service to run every 30 minutes during peak and then off-peak every 40 minutes. On Fort Cavazos, you can see that we're running roughly seven minutes, because there's plenty of service and accessibility, which is why we're having such a great customer satisfaction index at the time. And then travel currently takes about an hour on the fixed route service and an hour on our special transit services. At Fort Cav, it's 11 minutes. We're expecting roughly between 15 minutes and 20 minutes frequency during peak and 30 minutes during off-peak. And then the service area, as I alluded to before, we're currently running fixed route with a complimentary service that runs within 3/4 of a mile from the fixed route, but doesn't run everywhere, and it's not accessible to everywhere, to everybody with microtransit. All passengers in the microtransit service area will be served with it. And we did a significant amount of public outreach. We held public meetings. We received input on all of this. It was very positive. We had a couple of concerns about the fare being raised, but honestly, we have not increased our fares since the inception of the service. So it's been almost two decades now that we've been operating. Inflation, gas prices, all alike, have been continuing to grow. And we believe that this fare is very reasonable. I didn't want to say the fare is fair, but we believe it is. And then for folks that are financially challenged or unhoused, there's a lot of social services that tend to buy the fare media for passengers. And in all of those cases, including students and military veterans, there's a 50% discount on the fare. So it'll be basically a dollar to ride the service. And the service has significantly improved over what it was in the past. So overall, we feel like this is going to be a tremendous refresh of technology services. We've talked to every driver. They're all super excited about this. We're adding roughly 50-plus jobs, which is awesome, which means we're hiring more drivers. There's higher employment, both full-time and part-time drivers, to make the service better. And overall, we're just really excited about the enhancements. I'm not sure why it's not progressing. And it's, I'll just go past that for expediency purposes. So in calendar year '23, these are the ridership, total ridership for the entire system. It's roughly 260,000 riders. And you can see that overall, the passengers per hour are below what we expect out of a system, which is why we're redesigning the solution. What we're proposing is being done nationwide by most transit authorities, and it's been highly effective. We're projecting the passengers, as you can see, from calendar year '23 to '24, '25, I'll say, as we deploy service starting in July, to increase by 250%. So much higher utilization, higher effectiveness and efficiency of the overall system. And from a cost perspective, we are asking for the same level of funding as we did last year. Typically, transit costs go up just for salary and wages by 3.5%, but we've been very successful in holding our costs. We have been able to self-fund increases in pay, better insurance policies. And so we're not asking for additional funds. We're asking for the same level of funding as we have in the last year, and we hope to continue to be able to exceed expectations in that area as well. And I believe that is the, yeah. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. And before we move forward, I just want the record to reflect that Councilmember Alvarez is present. It looks like we have a couple of questions for you, sir. We'll just start with Councilmember Adams.
Good, thank you, Madam, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, sir. This is, I think, the third time I've seen your presentation. Same questions I had before, is our south side that's not covered. How would any of this, because I have a question about the per-bus cost after this. Is it possible that the expansion could happen, if necessary, without paying more to our south side of the city?
Yes.
Like to the airport and the school?
So we have to start somewhere. We typically, nationwide, I've probably deployed at least 15 of these systems across the country. It's very challenging to start by covering the entire boundaries of your city, predominantly because as you get to the edges of the city, you have less density, less population. And so there's always a struggle between frequency, being able to carry as many people as you can with the dollars that we have, and keep the expectation around 15 to 20 minutes of wait time. But if you're having to travel too far to go pick up one person, then the amount of people that you can carry per hour becomes less effective. So we're starting with this service area. And there's a nuance that I didn't cover. So in addition to the services that we have, we also have a budget allocated for Uber trips. So let's say we want to get people back and forth from the airport. Most airport services are not very effective when you're providing shuttles back and forth to pick up one person. But what is effective is for us to be able to broker that trip to a vehicle that may be closer in proximity and can actually overall lower the cost of delivering service. So we're going to be doing a bit of that as we move forward. And then we're going to launch this. We'll be back fairly often to give you feedback, look at, you know, how many people we're carrying, where are the hotspots in the service area, and do we have the capacity to expand? So it naturally will provide opportunities, and this is very consistent where these types of service have been deployed, that we may be able to go another two or three blocks without really impacting the level of service. But as we did the community outreach, we did reach out to city officials to make sure that the boundaries of what we're trying to cover, the service area, makes sense for us to get started.
Okay. So maybe a special type of math or accounting or how you calculate buses, you, we have 15 buses dedicated to Colleen specifically?
Yes.
I think the map, the show, and then that costs, would I calculate 43,000 per bus? But then I look at Temple's, 12 buses at 25,000 and Belton at 18,000. Can you explain why the difference in why our buses, our contribution? Because I'm thinking based off this, our contribution should be a little lower. We have a standard across the board. But if you use a different type of justification, why Colleen? Can you explain why we would give that higher amount compared to the other jurisdictions?
Yeah, so there are various funding sources, federal, state, is the majority of the funding that's being allocated. So your federal apportements for Colleen are very different than the apportements for Temple. So your federal and state allocations versus federal and state allocations for Temple, they're different, completely different.
I would think ours would be a little higher, because that would make our contribution lower to the HOP.
But the geography and the number of service hours that are being provided, based on the number of vehicles, is different, and the local contribution is different.
Okay. Is it possible you can send that to the council to show that breakdown?
Sure, sure can.
Because I'm struggling to try to justify that continue rate based off the number of buses are dedicated to Colleen compared to the other jurisdictions.
Sure. And you're also receiving, I'm happy to do that, you're also receiving a higher amount of--
Called cost of availability?
Uber, cost dedicated to Uber, so that we can produce a much higher level of frequency of service, which corresponds with the higher ridership as well. So if you notice, and I'll break that down for you, so we're not taking too much time of the council's--
Thanks.
--meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Adams?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Great work towards the service enhancements and the efficiencies. I did note that. But in alignment with the at-large council number here, I do have concerns about the service area or lack of service for south of Stansluter. Essentially, from west Stansluter to east Stansluter, there's almost no service there. Is that because there's not a demand for ridership?
When you look at the households per acre, it's much more sparse as you get to the outer edges. So again, we're happy to evaluate that. We have to start somewhere. I think trying to cover that service area, there's a little bit of strategy around how frequent we can pick people up. So there's just a couple of different service parameters that we have to look at. One is on-time performance. To really get people to start using the system and trusting in it, transit needs to be frequent and needs to be accessible, and it needs to be very reliable. And one of the issues with transit, it tends to be not reliable. If you're trying to get to school, you're trying to get to a job, and it's late, or it's 20 or 30 minutes late, then it can really be a problem for people trusting to use the system. So as we get to the outer edges, we have to draw a line somewhere, and this is a constant struggle. It's like, well, where do you draw the line? We need to start this. The service area is much larger than what you've had to date, but the amount of funding is finite. As a matter of fact, it's less than what you've actually spent in the past, and we believe that you're going to have much higher ridership out of it. And if nothing else, just my history in doing this many places is, we will be back before you, and you're going to be asking for us to stretch those boundaries. And where we can do it efficiently without adding any money, we'll absolutely do it. We have no reason to not do it, because we want to serve as many as we can.
Sure.
And we have our eye on that. We've looked at it. But as we looked at aerial photos and population density per acre, a lot of it is residential, and there's fewer homes per acre as you get south. And so in our opinion, professional opinion, is it may reduce the effectiveness and efficiency in the core if we're trying to serve everybody that is, you know, geographically trying to cover everyone.
Sure. My core concern, and I'll be done here, is the portion of west Stansluter below that, you have Bunny Trail, you have all of Bridgewood, and there are a ton of rooftops down there.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, from Hitchrock going west on the southern portion of west Stansluter, there's a lot of rooftops. So I'm thinking about those folks who may need that service that don't necessarily have access to it.
We can certainly take a look at that.
Okay.
See if we can expand it with the launch.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Seeing no additional questions, Mr. Suarez, we thank you very much for your presentation today.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We're going to move on with our community partners discussion. Next, we have the National Mounted Warfare Foundation, Mr. Robert Crouch.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and City Council, and just want to thank you for this opportunity to share our vision for our potential partnership with you for the upcoming year and in future years. I'd also like to thank the city for our long partnership that we've had between the foundation and the city itself. And I'm going to talk on that in just a moment. But I wanted to start again with what our mission is as the foundation, just very briefly. You can, allow you to read that there, but I wanted to remind folks that we are a separate entity from the National Mounted Warrior Museum. It is a federal entity, and we are a private nonprofit that is tasked to support that museum. And some of that support, obviously, came in building the initial phase in the museum, but it's for raising funds for continuing to expand the museum, assisting with special events, and then marketing and advertising. And so that's what I'm going to come talk to you today about, is the marketing and advertising piece. A little bit about the timeline, and this is specifically the timeline for the foundation and the museum, from the time that the foundation was incorporated to the time later this summer when there'll be a grand opening for the museum. What's not shown on here, though, I just show you, I show you that so you can see what progress has been made. But what's not shown on there, what I want to talk about is the partnership. I mentioned the long partnership between the city of Colleen and the foundation. And that started on November 5th, 2010, when Three Corps and the city signed an agreement supporting the establishment of our foundation to facilitate the creation of the museum. Next, on May 10th, 2016, the city council approved a resolution of support for the foundation and its endeavors to build the museum. And the reason I'm here tonight to talk to you about continued partnership is on September 16th, 2019, there was a memorandum of understanding between the city of Colleen and the foundation, which allowed for the reimbursement, the city to reimburse the foundation up to $80,000 per year from available hot funds, hot funds, for allowable expenses. And per the MOU, those allowable expenses include advertising, solicitations, and promotions that attract tourists and convention delegates to the city, or to the National Mounted Warrior Museum, or for the funding of a visitor information center at the museum. The term of agreement, it was from fiscal year 2019 through fiscal year '24. So that current agreement does expire at the end of the city's fiscal year, this year. So why the hot funds are important for the foundation and for the museum? Because this museum will be the destination activity for Colleen and central Texas. I know you've seen these numbers before, as we've done our quarterly briefs to you. But what I want to point out here is that 75% of those visitors that you see here are projected to come from outside the Colleen Temple MSA. And while we can market ourselves certainly to the folks in our area, we really have to reach out past our area to ensure we attract that number of visitors to come here. And we've had a number of out-of-town groups already that have come to the museum, ranging from federal and state leadership to senior leaders from HEB. Multiple unit associations have come and done their reunions at the event. So we're pretty confident that we are going to have that kind of influx on the community in terms of bringing people in who are going to spend nights in our hotels, going to spend money on food in our restaurants, in our grocery stores, and other places. And again, since these are hot funds, the primary goal of that is to put beds and heads in beds, as they call it. And so that's what that is focused towards. So our ask for the council, for our partnership for this year and the upcoming years, is we would like to ask for an extension or a renewal of the existing agreement for the use of hot funds to support the foundation and thereby the museum. To give you an idea of some of the things we've done over the years in terms of using those funds for, is annually distributing rack cards, 30,000 and more, across most of Texas and at all of the entry points, the entry visitor centers into Texas. And according to the contractor that does that for us, they continually run out, and we have to renew them. You've heard about our billboard program. We currently have over 350 billboards located across the United States, from the east coast to the southern US, also some out in the west coast. What I'd like to share about that is, many of you who've purchased or used billboards before know that they're not cheap. An inexpensive billboard will run you, on average, about $1,500 a month, a minimum of $1,500 a month. Most are in the $1,800 to $3,500 range, depending on the location and the facing of that billboard. So at a minimum, the billboards that we have, both physical and digital, bring in or generate approximately $6 million annually in advertising for the city of Colleen. And if you add to that the rack cards and the other things that we're doing, our value proposition and our return on investment of that money that we receive out of hot funds for marketing the museum and advertising the museum is over 7,000% return on investment, which is pretty significant. So you might notice our usage this year in particular is low. And no, we haven't achieved the, we haven't used the full amount that we've been allocated on an annual basis, and there's a good reason for that. Without having an open facility, in other words, without the museum being open, we're only eligible to use, to apply funds to one of the nine areas that hot funds are eligible for, and that's been marketing and advertising. When the museum opens later this summer, we anticipate being able to find other uses for it that are within the boundaries of Texas law with regards to those nine functional areas that you can use the funding for. So we do anticipate using more than we have in the past. Some of the usages that we see, directional signage, you can see, we want to have some convention kiosks, potential for a visitor center at the museum. One thing we haven't been able to take advantage of, because they're very expensive, is ads in national and state publications. And we want to change many of the billboards that we do have to go from advertising our brick campaign to actually advertising directly the museum. But it didn't make sense to have come to the museum before it's open. And so we want to change many of those to that. And so my presentation is brief, but pretty straightforward on what we're asking and what the impact of that is on the city and on the potential for bringing visitors into this city, as hot funds are directed to do. I'd like to thank you all for your continued support, and I'm happy to take any questions that any of you may have.
Mr. Crouch, thank you for your presentation. We do have a few questions for you. You want to start with-- You want to start with Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Just a quick question and following up. The council previously had, about a year ago, a discussion about having our staff work with the museum staff, or the foundation rather, in regards to visitors' information center or further marketing. What type of updates? What's different outside of the billboard campaign that we may expect through that conversation?
Well, we've worked with the CVB on potential for the tourist information center in there. I know there was discussion about purchasing some digital kiosk that would display other things to see and do as well as businesses within the Colleen area to visit. I know that the initial quote that we received collectively for that came out much higher than was anticipated. And so that was tabled at this time. But we will continue to pursue that. There are also options that we will have to explore clearly with the city attorney on how we can apply some things to the hot fund restrictions. But one of which, the potential we could do is offset or hire an individual to provide, to be a visitor center personnel inside the museum. We could also potentially, again, depending on the attorney's opinion, potentially sponsor some temporary exhibits within the museum. And so many of those could relate to the city of Colleen. And those are some of the ideas that we have moving forward.
Okay. Yeah, that's very important to me. I know when I got on council, one of my first agenda items was to see how we can further align with the supporting of the museum. I think allocations so far have come out to about $200,000 over the past five years. And I'm curious to see the impact of all those marketing dollars once it opens. And I think for me, I may measure more on that as opposed to kind of guaranteeing that and hoping that we'll get what I think we should, we should have been able to produce, excuse me, over the past five years, once it actually opens. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Good evening, Dr. Crouch. Good to see you. That's a question I, and Mr. Boyd already mentioned about the 200 K over a period of time. You anticipate a long-term partnership with providing the hot funds?
Well, that's what we would ask for, certainly.
Okay. And then if any funds that you don't have, that stays within your budget or come back to the city, you just don't get it?
So I apologize. It is on a reimbursable basis. So we have to spend the money first. And then on a monthly basis, we submit a reimbursement request to the city. It's reviewed by the city finance department. And then, and we've been really good thus far about not having things that are outside the funding restrictions. And then at that point, we're reimbursed for the funds that we spend.
Okay. Last question, actually, no, you already answered. Thanks.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And thank you, thank you for being here. This is, I've been here since we started this project. And this is one of the partnerships that we always talk about here at the city creating. And to me, it just encompasses everything that we are as a community with our military, you know, with our base here in the city. And it's not just the city of Colleen, this is a regional thing. And it's probably one of the biggest things I've always said since, you know, we've gotten university. So I think it's something that, that a lot of the community members here have been part of and made happen. And it wasn't with any funds from the city. The funds came later. And I think that at a minimum, you know, we can do it. And I was going to ask, I know Mr. Adams asked, but about, you know, the funds that we give, since you're not using all of them, those are, you know, that's it, right? We're not going back and prorate or anything, right?
So far, we haven't.
Yeah, yeah. So it's actually less than what was mentioned earlier. And but the amount of, I think, tourism that it's going to raise, I know that's been mentioned, you know, the number of tourists. Do we have any way, I know that through our hotels and stuff like that, do we have any way, as Mr. Boyd mentioned, to monitor that so we can say, this is what we've been seeing before the museum and then after the museum opened?
Absolutely. So the museum itself does have an automated visitor counter. So you walk through the doors, and it'll tell you how many people have been in. What we'll have to work with them is a method and perhaps the visitor information center at the museum is a way that we're able to determine, or maybe exit surveys, is a way to determine where people are coming from. I can tell you anecdotally, you know, with the museum closed or not ready to be open yet, we've received anywhere over the last six months, you know, 30 to 100 people that have visited. I know that's not quite the number we want, but with the museum that's not open yet to have that kind of interest. We had one gentleman that drove three hours to come see it and was disappointed when he found out it wasn't open yet. But he's looking forward to coming after it does open.
All right. And then just, just one more thing. I just want to remind, I think most of the council members were not here, but how we got to this memorandum of understanding. And that came about because Judge Burles, our county judge, wanted to expand the Expo Center. And he came before this council and was rejected. And then he came back with an agreement, and they said that if, you know, we were to agree it, we would get some money back, we would get funds. So they kind of did some kind of reimbursement. And at that time, you know, the council decided that that reimbursement, you know, part of that through our hot funds would go to the museum. And so that's how we ended up approving that Expo Center expansion that they were doing and how we incorporated that memorandum of understanding. So had it not been for that, we would have never had it. So it wasn't money that we were giving away from the general fund. It was things that, you know, coordinated with the county and stuff.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. There is a question, sir. The city of Colleen, is the city of Colleen the sole source of the advertising fund for the Mounted Warriors Museum?
Yes. As of right now, yes.
And because it's a public-private partnership or regional, as Councilmember Segarra mentioned, is the county making any sort of payments or payments towards, or are they projected to make any sort of payments towards this process or this museum at all?
In terms of marketing, I can't answer that because I don't believe that we pursued that with them. We have asked for operational funds or for construction funds. And over the last several years, we do need to continue to push that with them. They've not had any available to support us thus far. A couple of the local cities have not contributed to the marketing aspect, but over the years have also contributed out of their general funds for operations or for construction.
Understood. And there are several community partners who also pride themselves on the public partner, private partnership. And so would there ever be an opportunity for local corporations and organizations to support or come in and participate in some sort of advertising opportunities with the museum?
Absolutely, absolutely. We would welcome that. And since this is, you know, obviously a recorded and broadcast thing, if there are businesses out there, corporations, other organizations that would like to be a part of this, look me up, give me a call, because I'm happy to, happy to share the story. And on that note, Madam Mayor Protem, I'd like to extend another offer to the city council that if you at all would like to come out and see the progress on the exhibit installation, they're coming along. I don't have an exact date for the opening yet because that's between Three Corps and the Center for Military History. I can tell you it will be by the end of the summer. But if you'd like to come out and see the progress and see what a great place this is going to be when it opens, certainly would encourage you and invite you to do that, and I'll host you for that.
Thank you for that invitation, sir. Seeing no additional questions, we appreciate your presentation, sir. Thank you very much.
Much appreciated.
Yes, sir. We're going to continue on with our community partners. Next up, we have Bell County Communications Center, presented by Aubrey Huckabee.
Good evening. How are you? Hello. Okay, my name is Aubrey Huckabee. I'm the executive director at the Bell County Communications Center. And just kind of want to go over briefly kind of what we put together for budget and happy to answer any questions at the end. So we were established and operate under a contractual agreement that was signed back in 1999 as the consolidated 911 Center and Emergency Dispatch Center for Bell County. And we dispatch for fire police and EMS for all agencies, entities, cities within Bell County. Partners to that agreement were Bell County and the four major cities, Colleen, Temple, Harker Heights, and Belton. In that agreement, it establishes the cost share as far as our operational budget. So Bell County pays 50% of the annual budget plus any capital expenditures, capital equipment, major projects. And then the remaining 50% is then divided amongst those four, I'm sorry, the five entities based on usage. And usage is determined based on law enforcement events that are created at the comm center. In 2023, just some numbers to look at. Again, the calendar year 2023, countywide at the comm center, we created a little over 601,000 public safety events. Just under 500,000 were law enforcement events. 220,000 of those were created for the city of Colleen. That's police, fire, EMS. 182,000 of those were law enforcement events. And then 8,500 of those were classified as priority one events for Colleen. We take those events or those incidents that are created in our CAD system at the communications center, and then we divide those up to establish what the percentage or that usage percentage is. So there's for 2022 calendar events were applied to 2024's fiscal year budget. 2023 is applied to 2025. So Colleen was 182,000 events out of just under 500,000, and it represents 36.65% of the usage. We propose a budget each year to our executive board, which is the city managers and the county judge of those cities. They approve a recommended budget, and then goes back to the cities and the county for final approval. But we take those percentages of the usage and divide up the budget. So like I said, the county pays 50% of the budget plus a usage percentage. So overall, the county's at 64% of the annual budget for the comm center. Colleen's at 18% of the overall budget. Temple, Harker Heights, and Belton. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. I do not have any questions for you at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On to the next, we're going to bring up Bell County Public Health. Amy Yeager.
Keep feeling like I have the wrong glasses on. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. I'm Amy Yeager. I'm the district director with Bell County Public Health. I've been here now a little over two years. Things are looking a little better than they did when I first got here. A lot of you have been here, and were here last year when I presented. As you see, we did get a new logo since the last time we were here. One of the things the board had asked me to do was change our branding and our communication and our presence in the community as a result of COVID. So that's one of the things we've been working on to try to get the community to recognize us more, know who we are, try to start building that trust. Because when COVID happened, apparently, I wasn't here when it happened in Bell County, but a lot of people didn't even know what public health was or that we have a public health district. So we're required by law to service the whole county, and we have just under 400,000 residents. The 2023 data just came out, and we're at 388,000 and a few more, plus the residents that are on Fort Cavasos because we're not allowed to count those in the county number. So that puts us over 400,000. So public health overall, I could do this all night long. I've taught college classes on it. I promise you I won't. They said five minutes. I'm going to do my best. The core pieces of what public health overall is supposed to do is to promote, prevent, and protect the public and the public's health for all kinds of different things. So some of it might be with individuals, some of it's on the larger scale for the whole county. Some of it is things that we can do that then impact global health overall. Public health is a very comprehensive, complex field that most people don't know much about. If you ever want me to come back and give you any lessons on any pieces, I would love to do that. Can you tell I've taught college classes before? All right. Oh, I've got the clicker. So we don't just serve the residents here. We also have to serve anyone who lives, works, plays, or passes through Bell County. So if you think about, if you think about COVID, if someone passed through here, maybe they were at the post and they were living off post for a few months, that's our responsibility. If it's someone who's on I-35 and something happens, and there's, that, they're our responsibility for all of those things. So if they live, work, play, or pass through Bell County. So we only use the resident numbers. But as you all know, we've got a lot of people to come here. So basically, we talked about what is public health that we're here to serve and protect the public. There are three core functions in public health. So anytime we look at an issue, we have to ask ourselves if it fits under one of these three areas. If it does not fit under it, it is not ours to do, but it's ours then to figure out whose it is and give it to them. So assessment, policy development, and assurance are considered the three core functions of public health. And assessment, again, is anything from, you just came in for a well-woman exam. We have to assess you personally with your health issues and your tests all the way to assessing, like we're doing right now, what's the community's perception of health and the health needs here in Bell County? Everything in between. What does your property look like if you need to have septic system put on it? We assess restaurants to make sure they're clean and compliant, keep them open. I could go on and on and on. We monitor data to make sure that that assessment tool is going forward, looking at disease trends. Policy development, people don't always realize that policy, a lot of public health comes through policies. What are the procedures? If you think back, I'm a Gen Xer, I can say that. Seatbelt laws, those of us that are Gen X, we did not have seatbelts, and we sure didn't have much of a car seat. I've seen the one that I wrote in. I don't know that I would call it a car seat. I would, it looks like one of those things you buy your kids for their baby doll for the car seat now. Smoking laws, whenever I was really little, I remember there was smoking everywhere. There was probably smoking right here in this room during council meetings back in the day. All of those are part of the bigger picture policy the public health sets. But we also set a lot of smaller ones, too, at the local level. Restaurants are always a great example because everybody loves to eat out, right? So there's different FDA rules that are followed. And then we can also put into place local things that we need people to comply with to make sure that they're doing what needs to be done for all of our health and safety. And then assurance is, we just had a long conversation about this this morning because we're going through and evaluating all of our clinical programs. We've done this through, across the division, or across the departments since I've been here, we're looking at each division individually and assessing, assessing internally for us, what are we doing? Why are we doing it? Is it reaching the population that it should reach? What are we missing? Who are the partners? Are we engaging with those partners? Is it cost-effective? Are we the ones that should be doing this, or does this belong to somebody else? And one of them that we were looking at this morning, there's one particular program that's costing us a lot of money. There's other partners that can do the exact same thing and serve the same people and are. So now we're talking about, does it make sense for us to keep doing it if we're losing money on it and we have partners that are doing it and doing it well and not losing money on it? The people are still getting the service for that particular program. But I have more questions because I'm not making a decision until I have more information. But that's the assurance piece. So let's say we decide, we decide we don't want to offer that service anymore, but we want to expand this one. We want to make sure nobody's doing this. So we're the only ones to expand this, but there's lots of people doing this. So we don't need to be in this game because we can assure the public that there's access to that service without us being the one providing it. So just to give people a very broad brush, So just to give people a very broad brush, these are, in general, our divisions, but more so the core programs at Bell County Public Health. So I feel like I have to, I should keep turning on to them as well. There's an old adage, if you've seen one health department, you've seen one health department. And that's kind of still true, but kind of not true. We're working toward FAB accreditation eventually down the road, which is Public Health Accreditation Board. There are now national standards for public health and what the operation and the guidance on a public health department should be. There's also a state statute in the Texas Health and Safety Code that we're required to follow. And then you design it based on what your community needs are and also that assurance factor. So for instance, the health department I came from in Illinois, we didn't have the WIC contract because we had a different organization that had been doing the WIC contract for 60 years before our health department ever existed up there. So we weren't going to take that away from them. Instead, we partnered with them, we co-located with them and shared space with them and just made it seamless. So the community members had no idea that it wasn't the same organization because it didn't matter. It made it easy for them. Here, it is, it is important for us to have it, and we've had that contract for decades and decades here. So each health department looks a little different depending on what your needs are here. I know that, like Williamson County doesn't do the OSSF program. There's an outside agency that does that. But here in Bell County, we do OSSF as the Bell County Public Health District. So as you look down across here, the big categories are environmental, and for us, we have OSSF, that's the septic and sewer folks, and retail food. And those guys like to joke that retail food's number one, and then OSSF's number two, and they're number one in the number two business. And those guys are crazy, and the ones retiring now and the other ones retiring here in a minute. So I'm going to lose my jokesters. And then last year, I don't even know if I got to mention this to you guys or not last year because I can't remember when it came, but we started our very first vector surveillance program for Bell County last year. We monitor, we had 10 mosquito traps. We had a grant from NACHO, which is the National Association of City and County Health Officials, last year for $10,000 to pilot that initial program. It paid for the purchase of traps, it paid for staff to go to some trainings, things like that. We were able to set out those 10 traps and monitor, and we found West Nile virus lived all over the county, at least in the big city areas. This year, we've been able to increase it. We have 23 traps. We've been able to incorporate the rural areas this year at their very large request to do so. We have not had a positive yet, but Williamson County had theirs this week, so ours is coming probably next week, I would guess, because the mosquitoes don't know the lines. So the state DSHS lab is the one that runs those, those tests every week for us, and it'll run through the end of October, and that monitors for different kinds of viruses that mosquitoes carry. And here in Texas, it's hot, it's humid, we're close to the equator, and they like us here. And so it's very important for us to watch for those, for those different mosquito-borne illnesses and adhere to that. So when you start to see my West Nile virus press releases, please pay attention and follow the instructions. We have a very large women, infants, and children's program that actually makes up about half of our organization. We have four different locations for that, three of which are right here in the Colleen area. There's one in downtown Colleen. There is one in Copper's Cove, only a few miles outside of Colleen, and there's one actually on Fort Cavassos. And the one on Fort Cavassos has the, has a milk depot so that people can donate their breast milk, and then it's taken to the city of Austin to their large milk depot, and then it's distributed across the country to NICUs for babies that are very, very premature that have to have that breast milk in order to survive. And we are the very first WIC in the entire country to have a milk depot on a military installation, so we're very proud of that. And our numbers double like every couple of months, and we've only been doing it. We did a soft opening for a year, and we fully launched it in the fall. So that has really taken off, and we're really proud of being able to offer that and how much we've been able to contribute to helping babies all across the country just by what we're able to collect here in Bell County and pass along. Our WIC program has a lot of different, the other locations in Temple, we have a lot of different programs through WIC. It's not just about the formula piece. We do a lot of nutrition education and working with moms to help get them the resources that they need and the education they need, and just frankly, the support. There's a lot of mothers that end up coming and working for our WIC program down the road because they're so grateful for all the help that they had along the way. We started a community health division when I came here. That was one of the three directives that the board gave me when I was hired. We have five community health educators, and they have been, I feel very successful in trying to help with that branding and naming and putting Bell County Public Health out there to the general community and establishing, reestablishing, moving forward some of those relationships. We had one person who I will not name because we're at city council, but there was one person who was the only one really doing any kind of education at all in the community for a decade, almost two decades here. And it's someone that you all know. And then when, when we came on board, we were able to super really expand and build on the foundation that she had built here. We're continuing to try to do that. And I got five people trying to keep up with what was built. So I think that's a testament to the person who is, who is, who has retired from our organization, but we're really proud to be able to offer a more comprehensive community health approach. And we're looking at more specific programs through the community health assessment. What specific things do we need? Are the schools looking for a certain topic? Is there something we're identifying that we need to get out to the communities as our communication campaigns we need to do? Those are the kind of things that the community health division's trying to do, and they're offering a lot of support to our other divisions. I completely skipped clinical services and systems, my apologies. We do have a clinic that's right here in Colleen. I will say that that was a very underperforming clinic for several years, is my understanding, even before I came here. We hired a clinic manager. We hadn't had one at that location. He's former military, he's a veteran, and he has experience in the military doing clinic operations, and, and he has led them to it now being an overly producing clinic. And now we're trying to figure out what to do because now we've got so many people coming. So that's not a bad thing. That showed us that there really was a need because we were like, are we in the right place in the city? Are we doing the right things? Are we offering the right services? And he was able to take his skills and take that team and say, you know what? If we tweak this, and we move that, and we tweak this, and we reach these folks, the Colleen clinic is now busting, it seems. We primarily offer immunizations, different family planning kind of programs. STDs, TB, and hepatitis B are our core programs in the clinical services and systems. There are other things that I know we're missing. The idea after the Affordable Care Act was passed was that people would have their own, their own medical home, and so public health didn't need to do as many clinical services as, as they did before, but they have clinical systems they need to do. So we're now trying to fill those gaps of things that need to be done and goes back to assessing. There's a lot of people, if there's a lot of organizations filling this, this service now in clinical, but not this one, and we, then we need to put our resources into expanding this one. Our immunizations, we could double our staff in immunizations and still not meet the demand that we're getting, just so you know. A month ago, at just one clinic that we did with Temple Middle School, we had 350 middle school kids come to get immunizations at just one off-site clinic. It's, it's crazy. We could double, we can't double staff, but we could double the staff and still probably not meet the demand. So we're trying to weigh out STDs and immunizations are really in demand here with programming and resources right at the moment. So we're really trying to look at how can we expand some of those down the road. And honestly, our TB numbers across the country, as well as in Bell County, have been pretty high, and, and that's taken a lot of resources to try to track that. So to go back down, public health emergency preparedness, nobody had a clue what that was. A lot of people still don't really know what it is, but now you kind of know that that's how we have to get organized for things like a pandemic. So most people don't realize it, but with public health, we are the lead for what's called SEBURN, which is a chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, or explosive event plus pandemics. And so if any of that kind of stuff happens anywhere here in Bell County, we're responsible to be the lead agency for those. In addition to that, the health, the, the emergency plans for Colleen, Bell County as a whole, and city of Temple, because they're the three that have them, we are automatically the health annex for those three plans. So whenever the tornado hit, that was emergency management's lead. They could have activated us had there been some significant health issue that had come up, and it didn't, but we offered our support and we did some of our own monitoring and things like that to help. Plus, we've had damage at three of our buildings, so we've had our hands full trying to fix our own stuff, too. Plus the pandemic. So there's a whole lot of training and exercises that have to be done by us to be ready to help support the community and all of you. Epidemiology, we actually merged community health, public health emergency preparedness and epidemiology into one division late last year. Now it's the Division of Community Health and Preparedness. Epidemiology is that, that study and surveillance of all of the diseases that come through and the disease trends, and we look at them from all different angles. And let me tell you, between people that come here to Central Texas to visit, I don't know what brings people from all over the world here, but they come and they bring all kinds of stuff with them, and we get to hear about it. Every week, we have one to three to six strange things that come through, and it's not all with Fort Cavassos, it's just general things. You know, we, we even have to sign off on bodies, like if someone's deceased and has some kind of a disease, we even have to sign off on that and certify that before they can be sent back to their home country for burial and things like that. So there's a whole lot in epidemiology that people don't even realize we do on our behalf, but we try to keep up on things that are popping up before they become a real problem in our community pretty quickly. And then public health administration is, somebody's got to not just run the business of the operation, right? Because we do have a business, we have to pay bills and pay employees and have benefits and pay the light bill and that kind of stuff. But public health administration has a whole different arm to it as far as working with the community, setting that standard across, across the, the whole county or the jurisdiction that you're in about what you expect and what you're looking for and kind of how to pull everybody together in a community-based way. So with all of that being said, the contribution rate for FY25 for the city of Colleen didn't change much. It went down a little, but I want to make this clear. I think I said it last year. It's even clearer now because we've really had to dig into this. We are governed and created under the Texas, the Texas Chapter 121 of the Health and Safety Code. It is my belief, from everything I've done, researched, and people I've talked to across Texas in the last two years, we are not in compliance with our cooperative agreement with the state, with the state Health and Safety Code. And so the board is now completely on board with us making a revision to that to make sure that we pull into compliance with the state code. So at some point between now and next year, we'll be coming to you as a council once, twice, I don't even know how many times, including with your representatives, because I've asked the board to have the, your board representative and alternate also come whenever we go to bring that, because we're going to work together as a board to make those changes so that that way we can all be, you know, the, the three of us can be together to answer those questions. It's been a concern of mine since I got here and first saw Chapter 121, that we, that there were things that don't seem to match. I've been collecting cooperative agreements from other places, other districts in Texas, and theirs are all pretty similar, and ours is not.
Ms. Jaeger, we appreciate your presentation. It looks like we do have a question for you. Councilmember Adams.
I just, you just said some magic words that we get, you're looking for less than what we did last year. Just to make sure that's not a change, that's not a reduction in service.
No, it's not. So, so the problem comes with this. The state health, the Texas Health and Safety Code says that the municipal members are supposed to cover this. In 1994, when the current cooperative agreement was written, when I was still in college, it only states that it has to cover what I have stated here, the environmental health salaries and 25% of the benefits. And that, that's the piece that's not in compliance with the state code. So that, that and several other kind of things we need to tighten up, but that's one. So the, so the potential amount may change. We don't know what that's going to look like as we move forward, and I'm actually looking for a public health attorney to help walk us through it as we do it so that we make sure we don't miss anything. But that's why it went down a little bit, is because we actually have one of our division directors retiring, so they were at a much higher salary. So we were able to take that salary, add in more people, and still have a slight reduction in this year's proposed cost is why. So you can thank him for retiring because that kind of helped a little bit. But, but the, the bigger point is, so that's the one for this year, but next year's may look very different. And Mr. Kegel, I'm sure you and I are going to have to have a lot of conversations as we move forward with what that really needs to look like. Should we do like a multi-year step-out plan for it? Because we've maximized everything we can find so far, and I'm an excellent grant writer, so I'm always looking for grant money to try to continue to cover all of that. We still have some COVID grants that are covering some stuff that won't be covered in two years either. So then I just have some next steps, some of the other things that we're working on so that you can take a look at that.
I still had a question. You answered my first question.
Oh, you had another question?
A little early on. The second question I have is, I think you already answered it, how you calculate our, but you've already answered it, so I'll, so you don't have to belabor, because we do have to get to other folks.
Yes. So I have a spreadsheet from how we did it. I'd be glad to send it to all of you. If your, your board members did receive it.
Okay.
And we gave it to all of them at the last meeting, which was in May, just a few weeks ago. But yes, so it's, we literally take all the environmental people, figure out what their salaries will be for FY25, see what our numbers look like. And this one, we were like, ooh, we can add some folks and still be around the same kind of number. And then we have to figure out, I'll, I'll let you know that the 25%, the other 75% of the benefits, that's about $175,000 that we still have to figure out where that's going to come from as a district to pay for the rest of the benefits from the staff. So that's a whole nother level of the problem.
Thank you. And Ms. Jaeger, we appreciate your presentation, and it looks like there might be some other questions, but we'll have to have them ask you that offline after.
Sure, sure.
We appreciate it. We're going to turn over next to the Colleen Economic Development Corporation, Mr. Scott Connell.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. We, for our budget request for the coming year, as you, as you know, just as an intro, come here on a quarterly basis, but just for folks who maybe not know, you know, the EDC was established to, to promote the development of commercial industrial development in, in our community, manufacturing, and really to, to add with the tax base and employment scenario. I do want to say thanks to our chair of the, of the board. KEDC is overseen by a nine-member board. Our chairman, Ranny Sutton, is here tonight, and a couple of the members of council on the, the EDC, so thank you for your service on that. We appreciate the, the partnership and leadership there. Let's see if we can get that. So I'm here tonight to talk about our budget request and, and a little bit of background on what is in our budget and how that's, the, the change is happening from year to year so you understand. We've submitted as part of our, the contract that is established between the council, the city and the EDC, our budget has been, a request, our full budget is submitted. So we have submitted our, our hard copy of the details of that, but I'll hit on a few points of, of how things are changing for the update. We are requesting a, an upgraded funding of $885,000, up from 865. We'll talk a little bit about what we hope to use some of the additional funding for in, in just a minute. There are a couple of things that are going to be different in our budget. As we've talked about before, we have acquired some property, just closed on that in the last month. We have been, with our fund balances, been able to get a, with interest rates the way they are, an interest income that we will not be seeing going forward. Our balance, our, our fund balance is going to be going down because of the purchase of this property. We, we will see that as a, as a line item on our budget that's going down by a good $90,000 a year. That's our estimate. We don't, you know, predicting the future on that is still to be done. We do have a new income stream. We, we did lease a small portion of the Blackboard Building. It's a, for a one, one, one-year period of time, so we do see an increase in, or at least a category of, of income that's added to the budget. We have seen over the last year an increase in, in some expenses in operations, property insurance, and some engineering expenses that we are trying to accommodate in the new budget based on what we've experienced this year. So that's some current estimates that we can add to it. So costs are going up. We are seeing some, we would like to utilize that extra 20,000 as we, in our contract for marketing to, to add for some travel costs to see some industry. One of the things, one of the things that's very important for us is to keep those relationships with the companies who are here, not just at the local level, but with them in partnership to their headquarters who make decisions about expansions and, and so our, that is not something we've had in the budget to do, and we, we've had it on a plan for, to do, but we're anxious to be able to add that, that cost into that. As you know, some of our companies that are, are based overseas, and I think that's, we'd like to be able to do that on a once-a-year basis scenario. And then there's some cost of living and business operating expenses that we've identified that are also tied into that economic development services contract that we need to right-size based on expenses of, of travel, expenses of some other marketing aspects of it as well. Some of the things that are not in our upcoming budget that, that are out of it, so kind of changes, we had, we are participating with the WCID number one on a water study. It's a one-time project cost, so we, we, you won't see that in our budget. We don't have any current incentive programs or agreements that are, that will be in the budget. Those are all either paid out at this time or, or have expired. And we had, we had, at the time when we did budget last year, we had a land sale that was, it was in transit, we have, or in process, and we added that. We don't have any of that in, right now, but we're certainly very active, so those things may change in the next couple of months, but as it stands today, with those, you'll see those not in the budget right now. The, the KEDC board did approve our budget on May 9th as a submittal to, to, to council, and, and so we, we respectfully submit this to you for the coming year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Seeing done, sir.
Thank you very much.[1750.02] Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Connell.
Appreciate it. Have a nice night.
We're going to move on to our citizens' comments on agenda items. Reminder, we have four minutes with one minute time allotted for city council to respond with a statement or explanation without engaging in dialogue. We're going to open it up to our first citizen, Mr. Michael Fornino.
Before I go to the remarks I was going to, with the public health brief about sea burn issues and everything else, it would help if the public at large actually had a packet or a series of pamphlets to know what to do prior to the excuse of, oh, we'll send out text messages. Well, I'm here to tell you that a sea burn attack, count on all communications going down. Our OEM guy's going to be sitting there in a dark room, looking at a blank screen, trying to send out messages that aren't going out and will not be received. With regard to the meeting schedule change and all of that, first, you asked us the taxpayers for a raise, and you got one. Now you want to be present even less. That doesn't add up. The only change, the only change that should be for a later start time to make it convenient for more new faces like we have tonight, make it more convenient to show up to these This just restricts our First Amendment rights even further. And as a reminder, you think it's a bluff, we are going to sue you. At present count, the complaint on First Amendment rights being able to address you on any issues not on agenda, the complaint is somewhere around 50 pages and counting. We can only speak on what you approve on the agenda, and now you propose less time to do that. As a city grows in size and complexity, more, not less oversight is needed. Going to two meeting schedules a month is not going to work. It's going to stretch out the meetings even further. Bring coffee, bring a pillow, because there's going to be those meetings that you dread that are going to go past 11:00 PM, you're going to get backlogged, or things are just going to get ignored. When you refer to, say, management of the city, more oversight is needed. You can refer to Jack Welch from GE, or even Dr. Deming, who his principles and 14 points are used by the U.S. Census Bureau. That should be familiar to at least one council member. And getting ahead of the excuses as to all of this, well, we can email or telephone you. Well, most of us know that that's crap. That is one steaming pile of horseshit. That's protected speech. I got the Supreme Court behind me. When it comes to that, I received emails from the mayor in reply, "Thank you for your email, yours in service," and that's it. And no further amplification on an answer or anything like that. That's hardly engagement. So this right here at the lectern is where we, the regular citizens, your bosses, the only time that we consistently can get up here and say that. Now you're going to look to restrict that. Getting ahead of the excuses again, many issues, you have these phantom constituents. Oh, we've heard from people in email and telephone call. It's strange that there are those of us who have the balls to come up here, put our reputations and our names to paper, state our positions, and yet, all we hear is, we've heard from other people. Who are these people? We never hear them, and it's strange that those replies only seem to agree with positions you've already concluded for yourselves. So, please don't cite this, what we've heard from other people. I doubt they exist. If they do, prove it. City manager is often saying, well, we're looking at what other towns are doing. We're the 19th-largest town in Texas. The only towns that we should be compared to is Austin, Waco, which is actually a smaller town, far more complex, and I guarantee you that they're not doing just one or two meetings a month. Conversely, the small town of Jerryl only has, or had been having, one meeting a month, and they're a complete disaster. This whole thing, I wonder if the citizens here know just how much, if I may request one more moment, because there was a topic that I didn't.
That is up to the determination of the council. Council?
No.
Councilmember first. They are rejecting.
And here, that demonstrates the point quite clearly.
Thank you. Next to speak, we have Dr. Cameron Cochran.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Temp. I would like to discuss DS 24038, the budget review of the fiscal year 2025. My question, when looking at the latest agenda and slides and everything in there, is why is the city manager in such a panic to raise so much money and raise the cost of everything associated with city services? This includes public works fees, parking recreation fees, parade permit fees, and fees at the Colleen Convention and Civic Center. The list goes on and on. Is the city in that much dire straits that everything has to be increased? Could it be the past six months that people known as the disruptors, the instigators, or maybe the strawberry shortcake gang were correct? The city is in the red. These loyal members of society kept attending council meetings and urging the council to stop spending money. Looks like the council wasn't listening, and they forgot that they are accountable. They keep approving outrageous monetary requests, and now the city manager must have realized that, and knows he's in the red, needs to pay those bills. Let's move on. Under the RS 24093, the city employees' healthcare benefit plan for Blue Cross, I previously asked, what about funding for preventative medical care or treatment? I see that's not in there. City employees do need treatment for hepatitis C and tetanus shots. Right now, they have to pay out of their pocket. Why isn't this covered? This is a city, and you should be protecting your folks. Maybe this can be added in a subsequent agenda item when it's passed later this year. Let's move on. Cooling centers. Surprisingly, it's getting hot out there, but I haven't heard anything about those. Are those going to be open? Are those even budgeted for this year? We don't know. Donated land. Earlier this year, land was donated, three parcels of land, and yet the status, who knows? That hasn't been addressed. Featherline Drive. Several weeks ago, the city manager said that he would help put in place temporary road measures. What happened to that? Again, something else that evaporated. Smoke and mirrors in the city council. Before I end today's speech, I would like to end with the words to everyone in attendance and watching at home, Happy Gay Pride Month. I've researched, and I know that the city, the mayor, the city council, and the city manager have never issued a proclamation to recognize this. City of Colleen, it's your turn to acknowledge this recognition. Therefore, I want to acknowledge this significant event, since no one else will. Thank you.
Arca Nego.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Temp, council members. I'm speaking on the fee schedule. First of all, I do agree with the increase in the bulk items pickup service increase. That is because, that is when it gets picked up on a non-scheduled day. The bulk collection service fee on a scheduled collection day, I think that should be lowered. But I do agree with the increase in bulk pickup fee increase. And going to development fees, I noticed that there are, I'm assuming all the numbers are correct here, but they're using some benchmarks. One of them is benchmark average similar sizes that cities in Texas, or cities in all of US, or what, it doesn't mean that much to me, without much description. The benchmark average for local, regional, that sounds more appropriate to compare to. And I would like to point out that, well, any increase in development services will result in an increase in housing cost. I would like to point out, for example, that the inspection for public structure, infrastructure for subdivisions over 50 acres, in Colleen, it costs $15,000. In the area, the average is $25, according to this presentation. It is much 600 times higher. I would propose to lower the development services for this cost, all of them, to match what is around this area. Lowering development fees would result in lower housing costs. And I did not even realize how much higher we are than our neighbors. I wonder why that is. Regarding animal services, I noticed that there is an increase in owner requested euthanasia. I completely disagree with that, and I will explain why. Most of the time, people ask to euthanize their pet if it's sick, and they cannot afford vet costs, or if it's a dangerous animal. In either case, I think a person should have the opportunity to euthanize an animal and not let it suffer, and not create a danger to the public. And increasing the cost will mean that somebody who cannot afford the vet cost, they don't want to pay the higher cost to request euthanasia, what are they going to do? Dump that animal? That's not going to help the city. Same with dangerous dogs. And I know from personal experience, I, there was a dangerous dog adopted from the Colleen Animal Shelter, and I had, I ended up having to deal with the situation. I took that animal to Bell County Sheriff's Department, and I had to euthanize the dog because he was a danger, she was a danger to the public. And if you're increasing the fee, a dog bites your child, and you decide, you know what? I'm not going to keep this dog, this dog is dangerous, but it's cost so much at the shelter to euthanize the dog. Well, what are they going to do? Dump it somewhere. I don't think it's a good idea to increase the euthanasia cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leo Gukhaisen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Temp, council members, Mr. City Manager, and fellow residents. As usual, I always start my comments off with a quote. Today's is, "You can fool all the people some of the time, and some of the people all the time, but you cannot fool all the people all the time." Abraham Lincoln, 16th President of the United States of America. There's a lot on this agenda that I would like to talk about, but I only have four minutes. So, I know a lot of these items here under the resolutions are going to get passed anyway, no matter what comments are said on them. So, I'm going to focus my time on the discussion of the proposed FY '24, '25 budget related to community partners. While listening and reading the presentations, it appears to me that three of the five agencies that spoke tonight have reminded me of the scene from Oliver Twist, when he says, "Please, sir, may I have some more?" It appears unto me, and only myself, as I'm speaking on behalf of, that the Bell County Health Clinic and the Bell County Communication Center should be the most important two of those five that address the council. Regarding the HOP, it states that its 23-ride share was 20, I'm sorry, was 259,805, and they're projecting their first full year under the new process being 650,000. That's an increase of 390,195. That's a lot of people. That's more than we have in the city of Colleen. So I have to ask, wonder, I cannot ask them, but y'all, someone at this body can, how does a HOP count the ride share? Example, if I get on at one location, and I transfer two times to get to my final destination, does that count as one or three ride shares? Being the same person going from A to B, but I have to transfer, so is it one ride share, or is it three ride shares? Because that brings up the numbers from one to three, but it's the same person. Regarding the Mounted Warfighter Foundation, it's no secret of the love-hate relationship that I have on that issue, and I've always addressed it with this body, and I stand by it, and I haven't changed my mind, that this is nothing more than a Field of Dreams museum. If you build it, they will come. I honestly have not seen tangible information to prove the facts that they presented. They are using a three-year-old item from the Texas A&amp;M University of Central Texas from 2021. I know most businesses do not use three-year-old surveys or researches to predict their outcome. As I said before, the Bell County Communication Center, since our numbers are increasing, we definitely should support them on our request. The Bell County Public Health Clinic, they said that the request went down, understanding why, but...
Mr. Gukhaisen, your time is up. Thank you, sir.
Wow, that's for, okay. I'm not going to ask for another minute, but thank you.
Thank you.
That was a quick, quick four-minute.
He didn't. Okay. Thank you. Melissa Brown.
Going to talk fast, because this is a packed agenda, and fortunately, I took notes. So, item number six, what are the coverages? Because the presentation doesn't say what's going to be covered. Are they adding? Are they losing? Are they going to be paying more in co-pays and deductibles? None of that is covered in the presentation. All of that is important when it comes to employee health insurance. And is there a way for the city to absorb more of the premium? Because we actually have good competitive wages for the cost of living in the city of Colleen, until you add in the cost of having to pay for health insurance, and that greatly deducts from it. I highly support the formation of a charter committee, review committee. As far as the HOP, let's talk about the cost increase for the city when KTempo paid for a lot of the micro buses, according to KTempo's report. They're doing well on Fort Cabasas because it's free, but fares are doubling for our residents. Anyone without a phone or a computer, so think homeless, can't get a bus. South Colleen will not be covered, except for A&amp;M, and was highest, height of states added. Costs should be made up without raising fares based on increased ridership and then their ability to get increased grants in following years. This idea of adding more money to the HOP budget is ridiculous to me right now. The Mounted Warfare Foundation, none of the advertising is Colleen-specific or includes things to do in Colleen. I saw a flyer for it on my way to New York for my mom's funeral around this time last year, and it said it would already be open by now. It talks about paying for a YouTuber to visit, possibly, possibly a visitor center. Other nonprofits bring money into the city through events, and we have limited HOP funds to distribute to those organizations that are going through a competitive process and still not getting everything that they request. This is line jumping. How many unique scans per week, month, or year on their QR code? And they receive money from multiple other sources. They are not in the city of Colleen, and no other organization gets HOP money for anything outside of the city. Everything is possible or potential, but there is no real guarantee on any ROI from this. Let's talk about KEDC. They're requesting more money for Economic Development Services contract with Greater Colleen Chamber of Commerce. We have never seen accountability for, accounting for Chamber employees working on GKCC-specific versus economic development. The Chamber has forged forward, that brings in additional economic development money. Go ahead and check their website on it. KEDC shouldn't be funding WCID to begin with. Stop giving $150,000 plus to Texas A&amp;M Central Texas for scholarships and marketing, when it's a match for up to the 2,000 students that are enrolled there with annual declining enrollment numbers. And per their financial report, they have $1.2 million in endowments and $24 million in unencumbered and unrestricted funds. Let's go ahead and stop giving them money for marketing for the School of Business, since they have the money for that, too. Stop paying a contract to HATA. In the 18 months I was on KEDC, I never once saw anything from HATA. Show the public's full budget and financials audited and audited for both KEDC and the Chamber, and we will find the money that KEDC is asking for. Start restricting the money from our water funds, public infrastructure incentives only. And an RFP for Economic Development Services should be required and then reviewed by city staff. The module building for KPD training, why are we not just going to get one that is already used by KISD and being phased out? When will citizens have the first ability to speak and ask questions about the budget? Why is it not provided, and when will it be provided? Well, other cities do only have meetings twice a month. They go, well, after midnight. Still workshop, have housing development committees that are completely composed of council members that meet throughout the weeks. If they are limited... members that meet throughout the weeks. If they are limited to twice a month, then a regular meeting followed by a workshop for the following meeting should happen the same day. Regardless, council members shouldn't be asking for extra time when they get multiple rounds, and they deny citizens extra time. Speaking about economic development-
Thank you, Mrs. Brown, your time is up.
And I'm going to ask, since the same council members that tell me no every week keep asking for time, may I get an extra minute to talk about the rate increases, please?
That is up to the determination of the council. Council members, do you approve? Council members, do you approve? They do not approve. Thank you.
Hypocrisy at its finest.
Next up, we have Sean Price.
Good evening, council. I'm going to take a few seconds again to remember the Israeli hostages in Israel that have been in captivity, and being murdered, and raped, and sodomized for the past 241 days. So I'm going to take a moment of silence.
Mr. Price, you're speaking on RS24-093.
Well, yes, a combination.
Thank you, sir.
So as last week, right, I spoke to the amount of spending. So if there's a dollar amount on any of your RS items that you have, I'm going to speak to that right now. So right now, y'all are planning, out of this plan right here, to spend $3,947,000, or 47,294, and that's just a rounded-down estimate. And like, when are y'all going to start reducing the amount that you spend, and reduce our tax liability, right? Spend, spend, spend. And that's, it's all we ever see. Never how we're going to work out how we're going to lower the tax on gas, on property. That's never talked about. The only thing that's ever talked about is how to get more people in to pay into the pot, to make more money for the city, and then spend more. ARPA funds, that's why we have the, the increase in spending on all of our items right now. Inflation. That's all ARPA was, is to inflate the dollars, so we have to spend more of it to give it back, because it's 35 trillion in debt as a nation. And as our city is at 282 million in debt, with an estimated 105 coming here real soon, plus 2 million last week, 3 million this week, we're spending a lot of money. And when I come down here, and I see things like this, RS24-093 with Blue Shield, Blue Cross, are y'all aware that they no longer allow white vendors to sell medical items to them? Is that the reason why that was chosen? Discrimination against whites is very, very prominent right now. And this is one of the businesses, this is why I no longer use them in my healthcare for TRICARE, because they want to eliminate me and discriminate against me. And I'm wondering if that's why this body chooses to use them. Why do we need a mobile building for the training center for our police? Why doesn't it need to be a mobile building? It can be a permanent building. I don't know why, and that's an expensive $86,000. I don't know why, why we need, the training facility out there needs a separate building to be mobile, unless it's tactical-wise. Such as what Hocker Heights has as a fifth-wheel mobile training center, or headquarters observation. And if I could get a request on OR24006, just the overview of all the chapters that are listed here, of their headings, read out tonight, that would be grateful, I would be gratefully helpful on that. So I can understand how that's all pertaining to the one, the one ordinance that we're sitting here trying to amend, without the topic attached to it. So I don't know why the chapters don't apply to a topic of what's being changed here. And if, it would be great that, of the questions that I asked last week, right, y'all have my email address. If y'all would address it, be great, because nobody addressed any of the questions I had last week, or actually for the last six months. Nobody's addressed anything.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Your time is up. For the record, I would like to make sure that the public does understand that there is no way, no how, no reason that this body would make any sort of determination based on the insinuation of discrimination of any kind. We represent the most diverse city in central Texas, in the state of Texas, and we are very proud of that. However, when it comes to choosing our healthcare benefits, we have a wonderful team of dedicated professionals, who is their sole job to do research, to make sure that they are getting the best information, and the best quality, and the best prices for our employees. And I trust and believe, I'm speaking for myself, not on behalf of the council, but I speak for myself, that I trust Mrs. Bark and her department to do due diligence, to make sure that she is representing all of the people, all of the time, with the best rates possible as it relates to their medical care.
Will say.
We're going to turn it over to our city secretary at this time. Thank you.
We have a few council members wanting to speak.
Thank you very much. That's okay. All right. Starting off with Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to address a couple of things that were brought up. And first, Mr. Price, his comments about Blue Cross Blue Shield, I have no idea what Blue Cross Blue Shield does. They're a private, for-profit company, part of our capitalist-free market, which you have said before you're a fan of. So I think that's enough about that. The city of Colleen is, and every city across the United States is a nonprofit. We don't produce any money. The residents and taxpayers are the money, just like your local church doesn't produce any money. People who go to the church are the money for the church. So what it takes to run a city that's 56 square miles, that houses 160,000 people, and we maintain enough lane miles to go from here to Seattle and back, it costs money. I'm sorry, I pay taxes, too. I'd love for them to be less. And lastly, there was a comment-
Councilmember Alvarez, your time is up unless we have a yield. Okay, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. City Manager, I know we have discussed, discussion before, the items that are going to be presented tonight regarding the budget, I mean, regarding spending, or items that we approved last year, and the money is now in the bank for.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And then, just for the record, we don't, the city does not set a gas tax. We do set a property tax, but that's based off of what the state limits us to. I think that's, some of the questions that were asked last week, I'm not going to bring up, but they were addressed during the presentations last week, but the individual that asked them was not in the gallery, just as now. So it's kind of hard to get your answer if you're not here. Let's see, and I do respond, and I'll, if I have answers to some of the others, I'll send them an email, so that I'm not violating Open Meeting Act and addressing last week's topics. And I believe in the, in the presentation, and that's my time.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. Much fun to reiterate that it'd be difficult to prove that all council members don't answer any of their constituents' requests, because I do not believe that's the case, especially for myself representing District 4. I did also want to mention, you're Mayor Pro Tem, not Mayor Pro Temp, as I quickly heard, it was kind of slid in there. But more importantly, I did want the citizens to know, your council members get paid $250 a month. It was recently upgraded from 100 during the recent charter election. I know there's talk about doing less work with less time. I trust we'll remain as committed as we are, despite any change in the schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no additional statements, Madam Secretary.
Minutes. MN24012, consider minutes of special city council meeting of May 14, 2024 at 4:00 PM. MN24013, consider minutes of special city council meeting of May 14, 2024 at 5:00 PM. MN24014, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of May 14, 2024. Resolutions. RS24092, consider a memorandum resolution approving the investment report for the quarter ended March 31, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Tangelynn.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, council members. In compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act and the city of Colleen Financial Governance Policy, we are required to present a quarterly investment report. We have partnered with Meter Public Funds for Investment Advisory Services, and Mr. Scott Grover, the Advisory Services Director at Meter, is here to present the investment report for the second quarter of fiscal year 2024, ending on March 31st.
Good evening. Good to see everyone.
Welcome.
All right. So just a brief update. I know we got a lot on the plate tonight. So short update, Fed policy. The Fed is standing pretty strong in their stance. They are not cutting interest rate at this point. Last meeting, when we discussed this, there was expectations the Fed may cut at this point. Growth in the economy is still strong, while slowing slightly, but still much stronger than anticipated at this point, given the restrictive nature from the Fed. Not a bad thing. So the longer rates stay elevated, the better it is for the city's income and portfolio. So it's allowing more time for us to work higher interest rates into the portfolio. So we have no, not had any significant shifts in the strategy at this point. Growth, inflation, inflation's still remaining just a bit higher than they'd like to see it at this point, but that has driven interest rates a little bit higher between the earlier part of the year and now. And so that's, that's been a nice outcome over the last quarter. You can see that shift right here. October of last year was the peak in interest rates that we saw. Front-end rates have remained stable. We saw that drop down in January there at the beginning of the year, and then now the interest rate, or the Fed is being a little slower to react, the markets have repriced back higher. So that's been the opportunity that we've seen here over the past quarter. For the city's investment portfolio, so ending March 31st, you can see the weighted average yield there, 4.44, that is continuing to rise. So as we have reinvestments, maturities rolling off, we're reinvesting back into higher interest rates. Average rates right now are anywhere from 4.5%, all the way up to 5.5%. So the longer the Fed pauses to cut, or chooses not to cut, giving us more time to, to work those higher rates in. But we are still prepared for the Fed to start reversing course, at least maybe one cut this year, and then into next year, as we have more resolution from, from the inflation. Any questions for me? All right. Thank you.
Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Grover.
RS24093, consider a memorandum resolution selecting group employee medical and pharmaceutical benefits with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas effective October 1st, 2024.
We'd like to welcome us Eva Bark and Kate McDaniel. Thank you.
Thank you. The presentation's not it. Hold on.
Can we review the presentation?
I don't know nothing about it, airport. Okay, thank you. Well, good evening, council and Mayor Pro Tem. The, I'm just going to begin with a little introduction, and then let you know that we have representatives here from Lockton Dunning, which is our benefit consultant firm. We have representatives here also from Blue Cross Blue Shield Texas. So after we get done with the presentation, if you guys have questions, we have the experts here that can help you answer any of those questions. Kate McDaniel, she's the Assistant Director of HR, and she's going to present the item for y'all this evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. I'm here to, in front of you tonight, to present the healthcare RFP for our benefits for fiscal year 25. Hopefully I can, there we go. Start with a little background in our funding options. The city has historically contributed a portion of the employee premium for employees that choose to elect those benefits. We plan to continue this practice, and also continue to offer a plan option at no cost to employees should they, should they choose to enroll. Our current provider is United Healthcare, and we currently have 996 employees that elect medical benefits through the city options. Due to the anticipated increase in cost claims and performance, as well as input from our employee group, we did feel that it was appropriate to go out for an RFP this year. And in conjunction with our benefits consultant, Lockton, Lockton Dunning, I apologize, an RFP was conducted, and we did receive three respondents, that being United Healthcare, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, and Cigna. As you remember, we also transitioned to self-funded platform in FY21 for our health insurance. So the numbers in front of you show what our emerging cost, or our projected total cost for FY24 looked to be, as well as the proposed cost, should we choose Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for FY25. This increase totals $140,776, and that increase will be absorbed by the employer, and you will not see an increase to the employee premium for the proposed rates for FY25.
Sorry, Mayor Pro Tem, can she repeat that statement right there?
Absolutely. Thank you.
I do have it later on in my presentation, again. However, yes, there is an increase of $140,776 in the total cost. That will be absorbed by the city, and you will see no increase to employee premiums. Plan amendments. So currently, we plan to mirror with Blue Cross Blue Shield the United Healthcare options that we currently offer to employees, which do include preventive care as required by federal law. In addition, we are going to add a benefit, which is out-of-network coverage, which currently is not provided for by United Healthcare. Blue Cross proposal includes a 50% coverage option for out-of-network care once the deductible is met. Additionally, as I stated on the previous slide, the city will continue to offer a no-cost option to employees for employee-only coverage on our Plan One option. Additionally, we know that the healthcare industry is incredibly complicated, and complex, and very consumer-driven. So last year, we chose to bring back an option to assist employees in making those health plan decisions. It's called Alex. It's through Jelly Vision. And what this does is it allows employees to interact with our benefits one-on-one, inputting their own financial information, their own healthcare information for them and their family, and they can consult outside of the city through this program to help them choose the best option that is most cost-effective, and provides the best coverage, based on their individual circumstances. And we've chosen to renew that contract going into 25, FY25 as well. Oh, I apologize. On this slide, we just wanted to give the visual to again reflect that there will be no incross, increase to cost to the employee for the benefits offered, even with a proposed vendor change, and that the coverage actually being offered for FY25 is greater than the coverage being offered in FY24. And last but not least, staff recommends that the city council approve the city to enter into a contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas for its medical and prescription plans for an anticipated increase of $140,776 for FY25, which equates to a total cost of $7,186,542, and also authorize the city manager or designee to execute an agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas effective October 1st of 2024, and that the city manager or designee is further authorized to execute any necessary change orders in accordance with state and local law. I do want to mention that we will be bringing the dental and ancillary products to you on the June 18th workshop. We will discuss those. And just to give you a heads-up, dental does look to be increasing, but we can discuss that at that time. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And as Ms. Bark mentioned, we do have some experts in the House if you have questions there as well.
Thank you very much. We do have a couple of questions for you. We're going to start with Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I wanted to just offer kudos to you and your team, to the HR staff, and everyone involved in putting this together. Looking at these numbers for the Plan Two with co-pay employee and family for $793.44 a month, while that may seem high to some individuals. When I worked for the city, there was a moment in time for, and myself and my family, I was paying $1,300 a month for health insurance with the city. So I know that nothing goes down, everything only goes up. So for y'all to, to be able to broker something like this for the employees, I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Yes, it's definitely a kudos to the Lockton Dunning team partnership, too. They are an incredible asset.
Thank you, again.
Thank you. Councilmember Segura.
Thank you. And same, great job. I know that every year, you know, when we do this, it's tough.
I know that every year, you know, when we do this, it's tough. I always kind of make that comment that, why don't we as council members, I want this healthcare, too. I can give up my whole check. But I agree, because I pay a lot for mine, and it's great. But the one question I did have, and I know sometimes we go between the Blue Cross Blue Shield, I know in the past, you know, we've had Scott &amp; White Hospital. Are they still able to interchange? Is there an agreement between Scott &amp; White and Blue Cross Blue Shield where they can use both?
Correct. So the way that insurance works is different hospital networks can work jointly with different insurance providers. So the Blue Cross Blue Shields of Texas of the world, the United Healthcares of the world. So for example, Scott &amp; White, you might go to Scott &amp; White and see a doctor that is covered under three different healthcare providers. It's totally possible. It's just based on the contracts that that hospital network has with the different insurance providers. If I've been too elementary in my description, I'm happy to have somebody else answer, so.
Okay. No, that's good. I think it's good that we have that agreement. Hopefully it continues on, you know, Baylor Scott &amp; White and Blue Cross Blue Shield, because it just kind of opens up that huge network. And I think what, you know, it's a pretty good hospital there, too, so.
We hope it continues as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Adams.
Thanks. And I don't know if you can answer this. Some of my questions are already answered by Mr. Kegel during the read-ahead, because the biggest thing that I like is the no increase. Sometimes when you change healthcare provider, there's an increase, and it shows the employees that, yeah, they really care about us. And I am curious, as we did the change, have you all had a chance to speak to just general, the general employees and what they feel about our healthcare system?
What?
I mean, our healthcare choice.
So tonight's the first time they're hearing it.
Okay.
So I'm sure we will get feedback. And actually, part of that feedback is what led us to RFP this year, just some concerns that we had with current providers. So we will continue to solicit that information from them. And also, we log any calls that come into the Human Resources Department to try and track trend, to see what issues might need to be addressed in stride as well.
Okay. Do you know how many other, guesstimate, how many other cities in Texas uses Blue Cross that has a similar, that are in a similar case as we are?
I would be out of pocket giving you that answer.
Okay.
Blue Cross might be able to tell you.
Do we have a representative from Blue Cross to address that question?
Just a second. They're drawing straws.
Self-insure.
Stephanie White with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas. Actually, that is not something I know off the top of my head, but we do serve a lot of cities across the state, so, including state, a lot of the public universities. So I can definitely get back to you with that answer for sure.
Okay. And they're self-funded, like?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Not all of them. There's a few fully insured, but the larger ones that are the size of Colleen are definitely self-funded.
Okay. Yeah, I would appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams? Okay. City Manager, Mr. Kegel.
Could we bring the presentation back up for a moment? And it is great work. It's rare that you get no increase. And I will, I'm pretty sure, talking to all of our surrounding communities, they're experiencing some pretty large increases. And this is second or third year in a row we've been in this position. So I'm very proud of the work that's been done. Could you go to the rates? Yeah. So these are the actual rates you see last year and next year, and where it says employee increase is zero. And so City Secretary, wasn't this in the packet?
Yes.
Yes, sir, it was.
This is publicly available. I just pointed out, we had testimony earlier that this was not available, but it is in the packet.
Thank you for clarifying that, sir. Also, there was a question that was posed regarding, and I believe you touched on it, so please forgive me if I'm going back, I just want to make sure it's stated again, regarding the preventative medical treatment?
Yes. So the ACA is a law that went into effect several years ago, and it requires that certain preventive cares be provided at no cost to the employee. So this would be things like your annual wellness exams, your annual well-woman exams, breast exams, colon screenings, all of those things are required by law to be at no cost to the employee. When employees do participate in those preventive care benefits and get billed by mistake or whatever from a carrier, they can call the Human Resources Department, and we work through them through that claim to get the billing corrected for them as well.
Outstanding. Thank you. We do have another question for you. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. I heard from some employees that were concerned about the previous healthcare coverage we have with United Healthcare. And to hear that we're making such a large adjustment, making, switching to another carrier, I think is impressive and shows that the staff does listen to our workers here.
Yes, there are several benefits to Blue Cross. Their network is larger. Also, they have a one-point-of-access platform. So instead of having to go to multiple access points to get coordination of care, it's all in one spot, which was a huge driver as well.
Outstanding. Thank you. And great presentation.
Thank you.
Seeing no additional questions, we appreciate you. Thank you very much. Madam Secretary.
RS 24094, consider a memorandum resolution approving a ground lease agreement at Skylark Field Airport with Aeroserve LLC.
Mr. Jared Provost, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, City Manager, Council, and citizens of Colleen. Tonight I'll be discussing the Aeroserve ground lease at Skylark Field. Oh, did I miss it? Staff has negotiated a land lease agreement with Aeroserve LLC at Skylark Field. Aeroserve plans to construct several medium-to-large-size hangars for aviation-related activities. And the initial term on the lease is 30 years unless terminated sooner or extended through a renewal. The lease agreement provides revenue that the tenant will pay for a land lease after each hangar completion. Staff has negotiated a ground lease rate at 15 cents per square foot for the first 24 months, 20 cents per square foot for months 25 through 59, and then 30 cents per square foot beginning on the 60th month through the remainder of the initial term or the entirety of the renewal term. And this is a overview of where the hangars will be built. As you know, that's where the former terminal was located at that we demolished earlier this year. Okay? Click, click, click. Potential benefits? Then this one? Yeah, okay. Potential benefits is increased capacity and revenue, attracting diverse users of the airport, enhance the airport's infrastructure, create jobs and economic growth, increase the property value, enhance community and business services, and marketing and prestige. The recommendation is for City Council to approve the lease agreement with Aeroserve and authorize the city manager or designee to execute same as well as any and all amendments and lease actions allowed per federal, state, and local law. And pending any questions?
Yes, sir, we do have a couple of questions for you. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protam. I think it's awesome that both our airports are growing and thriving. We had the vision to demolish that hangar, and sure enough, someone came in determined to lease a space and add additional hangar space there. So just pleased to see that. I did want to ask, how many square feet of hangar space across the buildings will likely be available?
Actually, I'll bring up the developer to answer those questions for you as well.
Outstanding.
And this is Mr. Joel Davis.
Thank you, Jared.
Welcome, Mr. Davis.
Mayor Protam, Council, thank you.
Good evening. So the question is, how many square feet can we expect across the multiple buildings for their hangar space?
So best to explain this as you have small, medium, large, and extra-large. Extra-large being able to accommodate most small business private jets, large multitude of some of those smaller jets, and then medium and small. So an extra-large is approximately 16,000 square feet. And so we would probably put two extra-large and a large.
Very good. Okay. Construction timeline on this is probably?
Depending on whether we do two-in-one or one-in-one and one. I would say 16 to 30 months.
Okay, very good. And it's good to have an understanding, too, that there's a demand for this space as well.
Enormous demand.
Enormous demand, and folks should note that.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you for that time, for your time, so I do appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further questions, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We are going to take a brief five-minute recess. Thank you.
Five minutes. Five means five.
Good afternoon or evening. We're prepared to call our meeting back to order. Madam Secretary.
RS 24095, consider memorandum resolution approving addendum number eight to American Airlines lease agreement with the Colleen Regional Airport.
Good evening once again, Mayor Protam, City Manager, Councilmembers, and citizens of Colleen. Before you use the amendment number eight to the American Airlines lease agreement, American Airlines lease agreement for the Colleen Regional Airport was originally approved by the council in May of 2004 and have either been extended for various term lengths or have been regenerated as new agreements due to the airline mergers and restructuring. The agreement was last extended in October of 2021 and expired in September 30th of 2023. After several months of negotiations, the airlines agreed to a new five-year lease extension with a 1.5% CPI increase for years two through five. And the five-year lease agreement extension provides the tenant will pay rental fees totaling $255,813, plus various monthly security, telephone, and information technology fees within the lease. The five-year term with an option for one additional year at rates and fees approved by the city council. And due to the extended negotiations and delayed responses to addendums, we will be backdated to October 1st, 2023 and expire September 30th, 2028. The recommendation is for City Council to approve the addendum number eight to American Airlines lease agreement and authorize the city manager or designee to execute same as well as all addendums and lease actions to the agreement, including termination to the extent allowed by state and local law. Pending any questions?
Seeing none, we thank you, Mr. Provost.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary.
RS 24098, consider memorandum resolution approving change order number two and change order number three to the corporate hangar phase two contract with NASCO Inc. in the amount of $521,166.30.
Welcome, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor Protam, Council. Okay, the item we have before you tonight, excuse me, is a change order number two and change order number three for the corporate hangar project. Just a little bit of background, on September 13th, 2022, the council accepted a MAP grant in the amount of 4.5 million to fund eligible portions of a corporate hangar two project at the Colleen Regional Airport. The grant match and the ineligible cost of this project is funded through the Capital On February 28th, 2023, the city council awarded a contract to NASCO Incorporated in the amount of $5,335,019.32 for the construction of the second corporate hangar. The original scope of the project did not include the finish-out of the second floor of the office area, because at the time, we didn't have a demonstrated need for that part of it during the design phase. We now have a signed letter of intent from CSI Aviation to lease the new hangar. During the initial discussions of the lease, CSI indicated that they are in the process of expanding their operations in Colleen, which when completed would add significant number of jobs and a need for more space. CSI agreed to lease the second-floor office space if the city would finish it out. With the ongoing addition of CSI employees and additional change order number two to the NASCO contract would complete the second-floor finish-out, this change order will generate additional revenue for the aviation fund and provide additional job opportunities for the city. The amount of this change order is $330,585.16, and will be funded through the Aviation's Customer Facility Charge or CFC fund. With the ongoing addition of CSI employees and the additional second-floor build-out, extra parking is required. Change order number three would expand the parking capability to meet the needs of the expansion. The amount of this change order is $190,581.14. 90% of this cost is covered by the grant, with 10% of the match coming from the aviation and CFC fund. The change orders will increase the overall contract amount by $521,166.30, which is a 9.7% increase in the contract amount. Recommendation is City Council authorize city manager to execute change order number two and change order number three for the corporate hangar phase two project with NASCO Incorporated in the amount of $521,166.30, and authorize city manager or designee to execute all contract documents and any and other change orders or actions within the amount set by state and local law.
Mr. Wilson, you do have a few questions. First, Councilmember Segura.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Just real quick, the expansion, is that, are they moving personnel from their headquarters? I think it's what, Arizona or somewhere?
Albuquerque.
Albuquerque?
Yes, they're in the process of moving different divisions of their operation from Albuquerque to Colleen. They currently have 72, I believe, 72 employees working out of Colleen. We've got about 20 of them right now that are working out of the, some of the AT offices in the hangar. We've got CSI employees stuck just about everywhere we can stick them. And some of them are actually working from home, because they have no place to office out of. They've been hired, they've been moving some from Albuquerque, but they've also been hiring quite a bit of them off of Fort Hood and the local area. A lot of their recent additions have come straight off of, I'm sorry, Fort Cavazos. Old habits hard to break.
Yeah.
At any rate, they also intend in the next 12 months or so to increase another 16 to 20 employees. So by the end of the year, we could be looking at 90-plus employees with that one company.
Is that because of their increase of business, or is that? Because I know when we first started talking with them, you know, they were kind of mentioning that if they do succeed, you know, the possibility of moving their business here. So is that because increased business, or are they looking to transfer everything?
It's a couple of things. They're looking at moving the operations, as much of the operations as they can, from the original office in Albuquerque. But however, they also just was awarded a major contract with ICE that was a multi-billion-dollar contract that they operate. And even though that doesn't really affect the operations at their field, the folks that coordinate all those flights and schedule those flights of other aircraft are working out of our airport.
Yeah.
To give you an example of some of the work that they do, and I think I mentioned this before, back when COVID first hit, if you remember, there were some instances where there were some cruise ships that came into San Francisco, and they wouldn't let the folks off the cruise ship. And they started sending 757s to take them to Air Force bases to isolate them. CSI was one of the companies that was doing that work. So that's the type of thing that they do. They also have government contracts in different places as well. So it's more than just the medical transport division that operates out of here. Also, they do the regional maintenance. They're constantly, I think they've got nine of the smaller aircraft that do the medical transports, and they're constantly rotating those aircraft in and out for major maintenance operations.
No, that's awesome. I think that you guys did a great job, hit a home run with bringing this company here. And I know a lot of partnerships and things that made that help, but you guys led that and appreciate it. And I think that, you know, that's something that's great for our airport.
It is. It's great for the airport, but it's also great for the city as a whole with, you know, with all the jobs and the extra income. But it's been a great partnership between the city and CSI to this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd.
It was just another opportunity to highlight the progress we have in another one of our airports here. We have an existing tenant who needs additional space, and we've got a change order to help necessitate that. So it's just good to see this level of progress at our airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no additional questions, Mr. Wilson. Yes, Madam Secretary.
RS 24097, consider a memorandum resolution approving a professional services agreement with Garver LLC for the corporate hangar phase two. with Garver LLC for the corporate hangar phase two additional parking at the Colleen Regional Airport in the amount of $96,800.
This is a companion item to the one that I just briefed. Again, on September 13th, 2022, council approved a MAP grant in the amount of 4.5 million for eligible funds, portions of a second hangar at Colleen Regional. In February 28th, 23, council awarded a contract with NASCO in the amount of $5.335019.32 for the construction of a second hangar at Colleen Regional. Change order number three to the NASCO contract for the expansion of the hangar is for the expansion of the hangar parking is being considered under a separate agenda item. If this change order is approved, it will require additional design services. Staff negotiated professional service agreement with Garver LLC in the amount of $96,800 for the additional parking of the second hangar complex at Colleen Regional. Improvements will consist of additional design, construction administration, and a part-time RPR or inspection services. FA has available funding in the grant to fund 90% of the cost in the amount of $87,120 and the CFC Fund will fund the remaining 10% in the amount of $96,800. Recommendation is approve the professional service agreement with Garver LLC in the amount of $96,800 and authorize city manager or designate to execute the same as well as any and all amendments allowed by federal, state, or local law. And I'd like to answer any questions.
Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary.
RS 24098, consider memorandum resolution authorizing the purchase of a modular building to be used as office space for instructors at the Colleen Police Academy and Training Center from Box Modular in an amount of $178,764.20.
Chief Lopez.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, City Council. Tonight I'm here to present to you improvements to the Police Academy grounds. In fiscal year 2023, the Colleen Police Department was allocated $250,000 in Opera Funds to improve the Police Academy Training Center facilities. Staff analysis determined the need for expanded office space was the greatest need. Staff researched options and determined a modular building was the most economically feasible option. A modular building meets all the needs for expanded office space. This is a picture of our current Police Academy Instructor's Office. Currently, six instructors and the sergeants share the open floor space that measures about 436 square feet. The new space puts two instructors officers, put two instructors and officers that measure 128 square feet and two instructors in a smaller office space of 117 square feet and the sergeant in an office space that measures 117 square feet. Each instructor has about 42, 42 to 45 square feet in the current office and the sergeant does not have private office space. The kitchenette, printer, copier, scantron machine, server rack, and a safe take-up Bellevue, Bellevue floor space in this, this, this area right here. Instructors eat lunch at their desk, which can cause food and beverage to spill onto paperwork. Instructors also have to contend with all the noise and interaction around them while working on lesson plans or preparing for the next class. This creates a loud and sometimes chaotic environment for the instructors, which can make it difficult to concentrate. I don't know how to get rid of this red line. Okay, thank you. This is the proposed Police Academy Building. The new building is office space only. Currently, six instructors and the sergeants share an opening floor space that measures about 436 feet, like I mentioned earlier. This new space put two instructors and officers that measure 120 square feet and two instructors in the small office. The new office space affords each instructor additional 42% more workspace, increases privacy for counseling or preparing to teach, two restrooms, one with a toilet and the other one with a shower and a sink, and a break area for eating lunch along with a waiting area and conference area in the open lobby space, which is this area right here. This is the proposed location of the modular building. This is on the gravel pad right next to the current academy staff. The instructor's office currently is in this area and the other half, this other part of the building is the, actually where the cadets train at. Now, this area here is current snack shack was built in 1981 and has been in service ever since. The building is 200 square feet with a closet and kitchenette living space in floor space. There's a table with four chairs and two, and two three-seat sofas back here. And I think they were like made in 1970s. Currently, we have 31 cadets in the current two academies. The snack shack smells mildewy and does not support current ADA accessibility. Moving the cadet break room into the current office increases staff square footage by 118% and will accommodate up to 27 cadets at a time with furnished with nine 30-inch bar top tables and three stools like you do in Subway. A request was close, was submitted, and two bids were received, one for Box Modular at a cost of $178,764.20 and the other one with Satellite Shelters Incorporated at $190,000. Both bids were comparable in price and services, however, Box Modular is available to the TIPS Cooperative Program. These are the dimensions. This is approximately 1,400 square feet. It has four offices for academy staff, two additional restrooms and showers, and an instructor break area. It also includes a lounge and rest area and allows for the retirement of the old snack shack. The city staff recommends that the city manager or his designate be authorized to execute the described purchase of a modular building from Box Modular in an amount not to exceed $178,764.20 under TIPS Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number 230902 and any change orders as authorized by law. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We do have a few questions, sir. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. This was an early ARP allocation that I actually proposed and the council supported back in, I think, 2021. You know, initially, the funds were designated to upgrade the range and providing overhead shelter, lighting and soundproofing and all that. But the police department best understood the most immediate needs and suggested the allocation go towards additional classroom space, which I absolutely agree. Actually, on January 30th, I met with Lieutenant Smith out there to get a tour of the range and I got to totally see the issue of the space with our leadership there. It's actually a real tight space. I walked in that snack shack, felt like I was going to fall through the floor. We had, they had several cadets in there crowded trying to eat and it was just, to me, it was an inappropriate space. And notably, there was a picture of Sandra Bullock in there who attended, who was at our range at one point, just something to note. I thought that was interesting. But interesting, but more than that, there's incorporation here for a shower. And why is that significant? There's not a shower on that range. And so when our leaders, our, our police officers are out there training, they don't get that time to go reset and come back. Having a shower there changes that. So that's kind of a big deal. I was out there too when they were working on that pad. They were drilling the piers. And I know it took about two and a half years just to get to this point, but we've arrived and this is going to be a great, much-needed space for our police officers out there. So just grateful to see this and see the progress come along.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. The 250 was allocated for the total program?
Correct.
Do we have, you have a plan which you can present later with to do with the difference?
The rest, to correct me, is under $50,000. We have, we have projects for the electricity and technology and the furniture, but I think all those projects are under $50,000.
That's what I was, okay. And then are we demolishing, because I'm glad the public health director isn't here when you mentioned the mildew builder. Are we demolishing that building?
We don't have any plans to let that pump through the show. We are, we need to because it doesn't serve any purpose. He's academy commander.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Seeing no additional questions. Thank you, Chief Lopez.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 24099, consider memorandum resolution purchasing a replacement golf course irrigation control panel through Pump Mechanical Technical Services LLC in an amount of $86,169.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, City Manager, Council and citizens of Colleen. This is the replacement of the irrigation controller at Stone Tree Golf Course. The golf course irrigation control panel went down in November of 2023. The replacement panel has been rented out at a cost of $1,500 monthly. And it's been recently brought to our attention that if this rental panel fails, the replacement rental is not available. Staff has sourced a new panel for, from Pump Mechanical Technical Services through the Texas Purchasing Buy Board Cooperative, meeting the state competitive bidding requirements and local government code 271.102. The equipment has a life cycle span of 10 to 15 years. The total cost of the equipment, labor, and freight is $86,169. The rental vendor confirmed we can end our lease as soon as the new equipment has been installed and this purchase will be funded through the Golf Course Enterprise Fund. Staff recommends approval of the purchase of the new irrigation control panel for Stone Tree Golf Course from Pump Mechanical Technical Services LLC in the amount of $86,169 through the Texas Purchasing Buy Board Cooperative at 672-22, meeting the state competitive bidding requirements and local government code 271.102. Pending any questions.
Councilmember Adams.
Be real quick, council, I'm sorry. I just want to point out that 1,500 times, that's $60,000 a year that we would be paying to, to lease the controller, pretty much. Is that right? Yes, 1,500 times 12.
$1,500 a month times 12 months, whenever that comes out.
Yeah, no, don't try to be mad, but that's about, way more than what it would cost to just replace it. So that's a cost savings that we're doing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that's stated. And I know just transparency, Mr. Kegway did mention that to me when I went over this with him. And how soon can we get this installed?
That'll be very rapidly, sir. As soon as we get the lease assigned, the lease agreement signed to purchase the equipment, it will be readily available within, I think, 60 to 90 days, somewhere around there.
Okay, thanks. I wish it was tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
Seeing no additional questions. Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary.
RS 24100, consider memorandum resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Pipeline Analysis LLC for sanitary sewer evaluation survey phase one in an amount of $628,292.42, excuse me, 47 cents.
Welcome, Mr. Ravel.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem and City Council. The item tonight is a professional service agreement with Pipeline Analysis to really start the second 10-year effort of our sewer evaluation program that basically deals with find it, fix it. As noted, this program has been in place actually since 2012, so from 2012 to 2022, there were a number of repair needs found as a result of the evaluation, about $9 million worth of repair needs. In addition to that, as related to the second bullet, the council just a year ago approved a flow monitoring study. Basically, the liberals from that study helped set a prioritization for the next 10-year program that we're looking at the first year tonight. That prioritization, prioritization looked at the, is going to look at the repair needs or possible repair needs across the entire sewer system that's composed of about 3.3 million linear feet of pipe, about 11,200 and something manholes and, and, and cleanouts. As a part of this initial program, going to the third bullet, we're looking at doing a detailed survey. And so this would be over a 10-year period, but what we're doing is looking at 10% of the system each year is the recommendation. So this would be the first year of the second round of, of 10 years, if you will. And so we're engaging Pipeline Analysis. They will be examining and evaluating 1,172 manholes, that's about 10% of the total number, and about 3,327,554 linear feet of sewer main, again, about 10% of the total that we have at a cost of $628,292.47. The results of their analysis, the outcome of that will basically allow us to identify where problems are specifically in the, in the storm sewer system and then also identify the, the possible repair methods that can be used and then also identify the repair cost estimates as a result of this study. We are seeking the council's authorization on next week to approve it as noted on this particular slide. I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have and also have our assistant city engineer here, Mr. Steve Kanye, to assist as necessary.
Wonderful. Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. All right, you answered a question specifically. I understand what we're doing here. I guess I'm looking out so that then what, we radio, we're just going to become a CIP or capital project as we find or when do we start to fix?
Yes. So, so this program is a find it, fix it. So this first year would be find it. The, the second year would be fix what we found in the first year.
Okay.
Does that make sense? And, and it'll keep going each year. So, so each year we'll have 10 years of finding, we'll have, and we'll have that succeeding year, each year of, of working to fix.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure, do we budget that ahead of time or based off anticipation?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay. And will we see that in this, be part of this year's?
Yes.
We're going to wait?
Yes, budgeted, yes.
Okay, I'll look at that. Thanks.
Seeing no additional questions. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Madam Secretary.
RS 24101, consider memorandum resolution authorizing a letter of agreement for the purchase and installation of equipment in an amount not to exceed $1,113,848 and a contract amendment for software supporting and hosting services in the amount of $107,158 with Aquametric Sales Company for phase two of the water meter replacement program.
Mr. Ravel.
Yes, yes, ma'am. This, this effort actually is a part of our ongoing efforts to update our metering associated with our water collection system. As noted on the slide in January of 2023, we were able to purchase 5,000 radios and a base station. And we purchased that because we already had purchased 5,000 meters, but there was a need to make those meters smart meters so that the reading could happen remotely and all of the billing and billing and reporting could also happen in an automated fashion. As noted in the second bullet, thus far of those initial 5,000 meters that we, that we bought, 4,424 of them have been made smart. So this technology has been added to those and they're smart now. And then within the next few months, all 5,000 will be made smart along with the building, billing system and reporting systems in place to have that entire smart system associated with meter collection. This particular company installed all of those, that made those meters, those initial 5,000 capable, smart capable, if you will, of smart meters. They are looking now to, or we're, we're seeking now to use their services into the $201,113,848 to do three additional things, provide an additional 5,000 radios, provide an additional base station, and also install and configure an additional 5,000 iPearl meters as smart meters. The meters, the additional 5,000 meters, in terms of that, 4,000 of them have already, we already have those on hand and, and additional 1,000 are coming. And so all 5,000 of those will be able to be made smart through the addition of the radio, the technology from Aquametric, and then the base station. In addition, they've, we're also have a contract amendment to the existing original five-year software support and hosting service agreement with Aquametric. And, and we're mending that such that they could provide that support for 10,000 radios because we would now, if this moves forward, we now have 10,000 radios on hand instead of 5,000. And then that contract amendment is going to lead to an increase in that five-year agreement from the 141 to the 248. Just a little information on how advanced metering infrastructure works. Basically, the reading is taken from the meter over, over the radio, radio and the technology and collected. And then that information is transferred to the utility. That would be utilities collections for the city of Colleen. The utility has the ability to, to, to read all of that information in your real time, see whether issues with the system or, or things that may not be working appropriately and be able to dispatch support from, from public works or an outside entity to, to address anything that may be a meter issue on the city. that may be a meter issue on the city side, and then also able to alert the customer so that they could engage whatever private resource they may need in order to address what may be seen. And then additionally, it also allows for billing and reporting. So to some extent, ultimately, this could, at some point, kind of look like your, the on-court, your electric kind of building at some point, so really trying to go to the next level here. The council seeking the authorization of the letter of agreement for the $1,113,848 as well as the contract amendment for an additional amount of 107,158 with Aquametric Sales for Phase Two of the water meter replacement program, making those additional 5,000 meters smart. Again, I have Mr. Steve Conyate here to assist if there are questions.
We do have a few questions. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Is this the same water meter replacement program that was funded by ARPA up front? I think that's different.
No, no, sir, this is different, but this program, there was initial funding of 5,000, for 5,000 water meters?
I remember now, very good, got you, very good.
And this would be an additional?
Yes, sir, I just want to make sure I was clear, because I am privy to all this. This is great, fine efficiencies, transparency, and insight, especially for potential water loss, and so grateful to hear that this program is going to become even more successful with the addition of additional meters. That's all I have, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you. This has always been one of my favorite programs. I was here when we tried to do this initially, I got turned down, because we had that shock effect of how much it would cost initially. So I appreciate, you know, how you guys are coming in, in approach, you know, little bit by little bit. But even that, that time when we tried it, the first time we did that, and it was so much money, the council decided not to do it, even though we talked about the money that the city would save. But my question is, because I know initially when we did the 5,000 meters, they were going to put those meters on, but then there was something else that needed to come later. Is that what you're talking about, the radio?
Yes, sir.
Because we did the meters, but we didn't have the radios, we just wanted to get those meters on so that, and so now we're going back and we're adding 5,000 meters plus 10,000 radios, is that?
Well, we're adding 5,000 radios and an additional base station, and then the additional meters that we, the additional 5,000 meters that we've already, well, that we're purchasing, that will be, those elements will be added to those meters to make them smart meters?
So they'll have the radios already?
Yes, sir.
So we'll have 10,000 that has the meters and the radios?
Yes, sir.
So that's good. And in trying that, I know that we were trying to do it like a test, you know, this is the, how is that working? I mean, are we getting the results we want? Because I know that initially we were talking about, you know, we're going to have a lot of people complaining because their water bill goes up, and, you know, it's because we're not wasting any water, it's more accurate. So how is that? What's the feedback are we getting from the people that are testing this?
My thanks, Mr. Conyate, that's your answer.
Okay.
Sure. As far as the feedback, and again, you're right, Councilmember Segarra, we did think that there would be, you know, feedback and people calling in and complaining because their bills were going up. We really have not had any.
That's good.
And that's the first 5,000 meters, you know, that have been replaced. Just to reiterate too, the first 5,000 meter radios, that's pretty much in, okay? We're just kind of fine tuning that. This is for the next 5,000, so then we'll be up to the 10,000.
Got it, got it. And so we're hoping that, I mean, it's going to be a process, because how many meters we got, like 40,000 out there?
About 57,000.
57,000, so maybe in 57 years, we do one, no, just kidding. Five years, right? So good job. No, I, like I said, it's one of my favorite programs, when I first said that presentation, and I think it was you that did that presentation, and, you know, we were all excited because I think that it'll save the city quite a bit of having to drive, and, you know, people saying that, you know, I didn't use this water and all that, so I think it's a good program, so congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Segarra. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, and the schedule for deployment is you're going back and forth, new development, old part of Colleen, new development, Colleen, or is it, you have a set path flow for insulation?
Okay, where the meters will be installed? This part of it is for replacement, so it's all the old stuff. It's mostly all on the north side of town. The new base station, just want to make this comment, it's going to go on the southeast elevated storage tank, which is at Cunningham and Stan Schleter, and what that's going to do for us is, is with the base station there, all the newer meters that are going in on the south side of town, we will be able to then put radios on those and be able to have them AMI meters as well. So it will be these 10,000 replacements, plus as we get new meters each year, those will be AMI smart meters.
In this, also, my other question was, as, I know, I think I spoke to Mr. Reynolds about this before, resident finds a broken lid or meter where, or how, does this cover replacement, or the city has to pay additional? How does that work? In this case, one gets damaged. I know they're kind of durable, but Murphy says that any, it's always a possibility.
Sure, it, normally if it's, again, one of the replacement meters or something like that, or the box or whatever that's damaged, then the city is going to take care of that. Now, we do have sometimes with the new installs, that while that house is being built or something like that, and then those individual issues are kind of looked at at that time.
Okay, so I guess my question also, is there a warranty for any of it? Is there, or we will always have to pay for replacement?
The meters themselves and the radios, they have basically a 20-year warranty.
Oh, okay.
But that, it's not, that doesn't cover if somebody runs over it and damages it and stuff like that, so.
Thank you. Seeing no additional questions.
Yes, sir.
Second clue, Madam Secretary.
RS 24102, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the award of bid number 2435 Airport Pump Station Update Project to SSP Industries LP with a contract in the amount of $1,215,097.
Thank you, Mr. Revel.
Yes, ma'am, this is a seeking council approval for a bid award associated with the airport pump station located at 5119 Weston Slurir Loop. What's going on there is a ground storage tank, 100,000 gallons in capacity will be installed. In addition to that, updates will be made to the pump station itself to meet the Texas Commission Environmental Quality Requirements. It basically says you've got to take the water from a ground storage tank as opposed to from the main distribution line, so that's to make sure that we maintain pressure. The airport pump station serves the southwestern part of the city. As we said, this is seeking to award a bid, three bids were received. SSP Industry was considered to be the lowest bidder for the 1.2 million and some change. And then, so, next week, we'll be seeking council authorization to move forward in awarding that bid for the amount as noted on the slide.
We do have a few questions here, Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Just so that I'm clear, this is the elevated storage tank, or ground storage tank, rather, close to the intersection of Clear Creek and West Stan Schleter, correct?
Yes.
And previously, this came to council, I believe it had a design, it had some text on the side, this is the same?
Yes.
Okay, what is the proposed height for this one, according to the engineers?
I'll let Mr. Conyate answer that. It's 80 feet tall.
80 feet tall, and diameter, diameter on it?
18.
18, okay.
So it's classified as what's called a stand pipe, so much taller than wide.
Okay, and I have no problem with this infrastructure, this is absolutely needed. Just looking at the, another aspect of it, the color and text on it, has that been established? Because this is going to stand out like a sore thumb.
No, it's the same color as all of our other elevated storage tanks, so it's kind of that tan color. It will have the K Colleen logo on it with the same colors as that, and then part of the whole dedication, what you all, council had approved previously, was on the, one of the sides of it as well will be the text Clear Creek commercial, and that's kind of in a, kind of more of a blue color, maybe kind of lighter blue color.
Okay, and that's what we've seen in the presentation from others taking. Okay, construction time, timeline, start, finish?
Sure, as soon as, you know, the approval is made, then we can move forward with contracts, and that would be a couple of months, and then construction starting within 12 months, that will definitely be built, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conyate, that's all I had, thank you.
Seeing no additional questions, Mr. Conyate and Mr. Revel, thank you. Madam Secretary.
OR 24006, consider an ordinance amending chapters 2, 4, 11, 15, 17, 18, 20, 22, 26, 28, 30, 31, and 32 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Colleen, Texas, to repeal certain fee provisions.
Ms. Clemens.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, City Council. The fee repeal ordinance is a companion item to the fee schedule item that you worked up last month, and you'll discuss again later tonight. This ordinance repeals the fees from the Code of Ordinances, and then insert where applicable references inclusion in the fee schedule. So a little bit of background, in 2019, council approved changes to the governance, finance, financial governance policy, delegating certain fees and rates to city manager, and per the policy, the fee schedule wasn't made available for public comment in April. The proposed ordinance removes the following fees from the city's Code of Ordinances that will be included in the FY 2025 fee schedule, and I won't read all of these too, but this presentation is available in the packet, and it's, the next two slides are references to all of the sections where those references would now include a reference to the fee schedule instead of the actual fee itself. And then this slide, the following fees would be repealed and are not proposed to be added to the fee schedule for various reasons that we no longer provide the service, or they no longer need to be in the Code of Ordinances. So again, most of this is cleanup, trying to take things out of the ordinance that are going to be included in the fee schedule, or removing fees that no longer need to be in the Code of Ordinances, and the recommendation is to approve the ordinance, amending these chapters, repealing the certain provisions that will not be charged or will be included in the FY 2025 fee schedule.
Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Clemens. I see Councilmember Adams.
I just want to address the small elephant in the room. Those were the headings for each of the ordinances that you named, that you listed?
These are the actual labels of the fees themselves. I did hear the question about the chapters. The chapters are large, Chapter Two Administration, Chapter 11 Fire Services, so I mean, I can go through the ordinance if you'd like me to and list those, but these are the actual fees themselves in that particular section of the chapter.
Okay, so the question really is addressed because that's really addressing what we're changing?
The ordinance itself is actually in the packet as well, and the ordinance does have those chapter titles if someone wanted to see them.
Okay, thank you.
City Manager, Mr. Kegel.
Just to clarify for everyone, this ordinance doesn't, well, it deletes some fees, but it's not approving the 25 proposed fee schedule.
Correct.
I think that's where some confusion may have been.
Outstanding, thank you. Seeing no additional questions, Madam Secretary.
PH 24018, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Lincoln Horse Properties Texas LLC, case number Z2409, to rezone Lot 11, Block 5, Marlboro Heights, revised from R1 Single Family Residential District to R2 Two-Family Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 905 Highland Avenue, Colleen, Texas.
Mr. Revel, thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am, Mayor Protem, I'm going to listen to the council. This is a request to rezone property located at 905 Highland Avenue from a single family to two-family dwelling. The star shows the approximate location, the aerial shows the location, this is a view of the subject property, and then some of the surrounding properties to the east, to the south, and to the north. The current future land use is residential mix, this request is consistent with future land use plan. The current growth sector is neighborhood infield, this request is consistent with that, encourages a higher development intensity such as what's being requested here, and then also supports infield development and redevelopment projects. Those are some of the implementation recommendations that are furthered. Just one thing of note here, current residential uses in this general area is about 60%. Again, this category of residential mix allows up to 95%, so this is following that trend. All notifications have been accomplished, no written responses received to date shows the property and surrounding properties. I will note here that all of these are Zone R2, which is duplex zoning, or two-family. So staff is recommending approval, because it's consistent with the comp plan and consistent with surrounding, the character of the surrounding area. And then also on May 6, the plan in the zoning commission voted to recommend approval by a vote of 70-0.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you. Mr. Revel, this, I believe this area falls within the North Colleen Revitalization Program boundaries, if it?
I think it's just out of it.
It's just out of it?
Yes, sir, I believe it's just out of it.
Okay, if we get any of these that are within those boundary limits, I assume we'll encourage them to apply for that, so the rezoning fee can be waived?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we make sure that, and it is not just the rezoning fee, billing permits fees are waived as well.
Yes, sir.
So, yes, sir, but that program is constantly active, we're constantly making sure that people are getting that fee waiver if they qualify for it, and they do get some relaxation on development requirements as well, if necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you, seeing no additional questions. Madam Secretary.
PH 24019, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance, case number Z2410, to rezone Lot 2, Block 2, Julius Alexander Industrial, from R1 Single Family Residential District to R3A Multi-Family Apartment Residential District. The subject property is locally addressed as 408 Liberty Street, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Mr. Revel.
Yes, ma'am, this is a request to rezone property that is actually located at 48 Liberty Street, is also the planned location of the reunification center associated with the homeless village project that the city is advancing. The star on the map shows the approximate location, is actually next to the Habitat for Humanity store. This is the area of the map, or the location, there are apartments here, and then that's It just shows the property looking east, looking west, looking north towards cemetery, and looking south. The current future land use is campus, this request is consistent, this is actually part of, like, an institutional effort that Habitat will have. In addition, it's also in the neighborhood infield growth sector, a map of the comprehensive plan, and again, consistent in meeting those growth policies and aims, this project is consistent with that. It also focuses on advancing delivering housing to those in need, which is extremely important. All notifications have been accomplished to date, one written response has been received in favor of this request. Shows the notification extends surrounding properties. This is consistent with the future land use plan, consistent with the character of the area, staff is recommending approval of this zoning request, and then also the plan in the zoning commission by a vote of 8 to 10. And then also the plan in the zoning commission by a vote of eight to zero on May 6th, this vote is recommended approval as well.
Seeing no questions, Madam Secretary.
PH 24020, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending chapter 31 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Colleen, providing for amendments to fencing materials regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Revel.
Yes, ma'am. This, this ordinance will basically, is really making some changes to our fencing materials section. So the section associated with security and barbed wire fencing is really being added and incorporated within the fencing materials section. Specifically, the amendments, as we mentioned, the, we're collapsing the barbed wire section into the fencing materials section. It also allows for uncoated chain link fences, fencing to be in basically your industrial, heavy and light industrial districts, as well as for agriculture uses in any district. It's also allowing for the hardware and fence posts that's associated with the chain link to no longer have to be vinyl coated, they can be painted and still meet the requirement. In addition, it is, we're looking to prohibit barbed wire and electric fencing in all districts except for agriculture, agricultural, single-family residential, and for existing agricultural uses. Second bullet shows that it allows for security fencing topped with barbed wire or razor wire in the industrial districts, as well as for utility substations, like your power substations, your pump stations, communication facilities, things of that nature. It is worth noting that this change will effectively prohibit barbed wire fencing in commercial zoning districts. And then in addition, we've added a provision to allow and provide standards associated with temporary construction fencing associated with a building permit. And so we, we just need to make sure we have some clarity there. You know, oftentimes when construction is done, fencing, fencing is put up. So what should that fencing be? Should it have screening and a fabric? If it does, can there be advertisement? This, this provision looks at that and makes sure that it's temporary. Staff presented this plan in the zoning commission, and then they all, they recommended to approve it by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Revel, we do have a couple of questions for you. Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Existing areas with barbed wire fence, whether it's commercial or residential, I'm assuming those are grandfathered unless they decide to get a permit to upgrade the fence?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Yeah, but general idea, Mr. Revel, of, I mean, legal non, potentially if this is approved, legal non-conforming?
We don't have, we don't have a quantified number, but, but this will affect the number of commercial properties. But as Councilman Board alluded to, their grandfather at this point.
Thanks.
Seeing no additional questions, thank you, Mr. Revel.
Okay.
Madam Secretary.
PH 24021, hold a public hearing and consider a memorandum resolution approving the proposed fee schedule for FY 2025 to be effective October 1, 2024.
Ms. Drake.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. So before I start, I was going to address the question that was raised earlier about the benchmarking cities, so they are all in Texas, and there, there are 15. The local cities are Belton, Copper's Cove, Harker Heights, and Temple. And the ones that we compare to that are the same in demographics or size are Abilene, Amarillo, Beaumont, Denton, Garland, Grand Prairie, Lubbock, Mesquite, Odessa, Round Rock, and Waco.
Thank you.
And this is the same presentation that I gave on May 21st, so it would be at your pleasure if you want me to give it again, if you have questions or?
Council, did we need to have the presentation again? Mr. Kegel, did you have anything you'd like to add? Thank you.
Okay.
Got a question, no?
Do you have a question, Councilmember Adams?
Yeah, just curious, have you received any feedback from residents since this has been posted in March? Was it March?
It was in April.
April, thank you.
And there were the four comments that were noted in the presentation.
Okay, just, just those and then the one that today?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Drake. Madam Secretary.
PH 24022, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 30, water, sewers, and sewage disposal to amend residential volumetric and commercial water rates.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, Council. Little background, July 7th of 2020, City Council received the results of the 2020 water study, water and sewer rate study. The study indicated that water revenues were insufficient to fully fund projected expenses to include infrastructure replacement. It was also recommended at the time that we do a five-year phased approach to increase the base charge for commercial meters based on American Waterworks Association standards for meter capacities. We did phase one of this in FY 23, and phase two was done in FY 24's budget. We didn't do it at the time of the 2020 rate study due to the pandemic going on, so it was deferred for later. We're looking now to move into phase three of the five-year increase for the base meter charge for commercial meters, and that's proposed in our 2025 budget. The estimated additional revenue for this is going to be roughly $158,000 annual revenue. It's also recommended an increase for residential volume, volumetric rates for the top two tiers only. This is for the 15,001 to 30,000 gallons, also for the over 30,000 gallons. It's going to affect roughly about 3,630 residents. As you can see, as you roll right through the neighborhood sometimes, even when we got a water restriction, there are people still watering grass. If it's raining, they're still watering grass, so those are the, the numbers that you're going to see in those top two tiers. So we're going to start doing this to also try to encourage them for water conservation going forward, okay? The estimated revenue for that is going to be about 154,000 annually. The monthly residential rates, as you see for sewer, there's no change, there's no change for any of the residential rates except for those top two tiers. There's going to be a 5% increase for the 15,000 to 30,000, and then it's going to be a 10% increase for the 30,000 and above. And as I stated, those are for the habitual offenders for who are using excess water, and it's only going to affect roughly about 3,600 customers, which is 7% of our entire residential customers. Monthly commercial rates, as you can see for sewer, there is no change. These are the rates for the, the meters, and these are, the rates are based off of American Waterworks Association standards for metering capacity. As, as you can see, the changes are there, what the current rates are, what the recommended rates are in this 30 of the five-year phase program that we have. Residential customers, as you can see in the four right column, there is no change for residential customers for everybody who's not in that top two tiers. This is our benchmark cities. As you can see, our, our water rates are still at the bottom of that, 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 of the benchmark cities, we're the third from the bottom, so we still have relatively cheap water compared to our benchmark cities. And we recommend that City Council approve the ordinance amending chapter 30, water sewer, and sewer disposal, Code of Ordinances to amend the water rates as presented. I'm here for any questions you may have.
We do have a question, sir, Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Who might be the largest users, water users in the community, is commercial rather, to be specific?
Who, who is, who would be the largest in the commercial?
Let me, let me restate that, not who particularly, right? Like, what industry, would it be like the school district, hospital?
Yes, yes, school district, hospitals are very high users. The chemical plant that we have here is another high user for that, but the school district is one of the, the top, top two for the, for uses as well as hospitals, yes, sir.
What about the universities, is it similar with the university and the college?
They are high users, but they, I don't think, if I remember correctly, one is quite as high as, as a school district.
Okay.
I just heard they are high, yes, sir.
Understood, thank you. All right.
Seeing no additional questions, thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary.
DS 24036, discuss and consider the frequency and start time of City Council workshops meetings.
Council, this is an item that was approved to discuss here at our agenda. I'm going to turn it over first to Mr. Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I would like to turn it over to the city manager, Mr. Kegel, to give that presentation.
Yes, sir, let me grab the. And also, everyone has at their place a sample agenda to, to see what an agenda could look like based on this. We tried to put it into a slide, it was just too small to make any sense, but we've got the handout for you. And so what we wanted to start out with was a survey of what other cities do. And so as we're looking at this, I'm going to have to pull this up on mine so I can see it a little easier. So you can see, the way this thing is divided, we've got the regular meetings per month, the time of the meetings, then workshops, and then time of workshops. So we've got four sections here, and you can see the workshops, there's a lot of variety. But on this page, we've got another page, you've got Colleen, Abilene, Amarillo, Beaumont, Belton, Copper's Cove, and I think all of these cities except for Colleen have two regular council meetings a month. And we had a comment earlier about Waco, so while we were up here, since they're not on the list, I guess they just didn't respond to our survey, but I went to their website. They have two regular meetings a month. I went all the way back to January and looked, looked forward, so they do the same, they meet twice a month, regular meetings with ad hoc workshops. And that's what you'll find through most of these, they have two regular meetings, and then depending on what time of the year it is, they may have one or two or multiple workshops, and some of them even take off, say, in July, they don't have any meetings. But you can see what all of our, on this page, the meetings start anywhere from 8:30 in the morning to ours, or to 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock at night, some in the middle of the day. You go to Denton, they have two regular meetings. Garland, they have two regular meetings. Now, Harker Heights, I'm a little confused about that. Miranda, would you mind letting me know? I, I think I wasn't as familiar with that one because, do you know? No, I know it's on the slide, but if, if they operate in the exact same manner that we do? Yeah, yeah. So all of these cities that I've gone through typically don't have a workshop one week and then action items the next week. Colleen and Harker Heights are the only ones that I'm aware of that, that have a workshop on one Tuesday and then action on that, those same items the next Tuesday. Lubbock meets regularly twice, same thing with Mesquite, Odessa, and then Round Rock. So what you find on most of these, when they're meeting two times, have regular city council meetings two times a month, they workshop the items on the same day, sometimes in the morning, sometimes in the middle of the day, sometimes early afternoon, or sometimes at 5:00. They move through the work session, discuss the items, and then move into action. And then some of them may have some workshop items on that agenda, or they may have one or two workshops a month to discuss different items that are not necessarily going to be action items. And so I also checked with the websites of some of the largest cities in the state. I went to, to Dallas, Fort Worth, San Antonio, and Houston. And while they all do things differently, the, the one thing was in common is they had two regular meetings a month, and then a variety of ways to deal with workshops, committee briefings, in-depth discussion topics, but the common theme across there was they had two regular meetings a month, and they either went straight into their council meeting to action items, or they did a workshop, some items ahead of time, and then straight into action items. Some of the larger cities, when they have 50, 60, 70 items, they, they just go straight, straight to the action items. So that's the sort of what other cities around the state do. I'd be happy to look into any other cities if you're interested, but the, the most common method is to meet twice a month on action items, and then maybe, maybe not have a work session before on the same day of those action items. So just to let the public know, the way an agenda could work, we took our May 14th agenda, and we would call to order, have a roll call, invocation pledge, approval of agenda, if there was any presentations, and then discuss agenda items that were upcoming for action. Then you'd have citizen comments, and this is a, a positive thing because we have seen any, all the presentations before citizen comments. And then you would move in to consent agenda into any ordinances or resolutions, public hearings, and then any discussion items. This is a sample agenda, it could, it could be arranged in, in different ways, but it is one meeting where you would have workshop items and then action items following that. This is set up where it would start at 5:00, you could start at any time you wanted. Even if you don't make any changes, I, I would suggest in the future, if we have executive sessions, that if we could start them at 4:00, that works really well because we're not holding over expensive lawyers or consultants till the end. Or if you come in at 5:00 and have executive sessions, then we have the public sitting out here waiting that, it might only be 10 minutes, or it might be an hour and a half. So just, just some food for thought on that one, whether, whether you make any changes to this or not. So I don't know if I went through the survey too fast, but you've got it in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of those cities. We've tried to do an in-depth look at them and, and exactly what they do.
Well, thank you for that information. We do have a few questions, so Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. This is a very significant discussion. We're talking about changing the meeting time and part of the, and frequency of meetings, so deep thought is really required here. If you would, Mr. Kegel, just for the public's knowledge and for my knowledge as well, perhaps the entire council, how do we arrive here historically, what was, or five to 10 years back, how was the council meeting, and how do we arrive to we're doing it every week now?
I think you go back 20 some odd years, and I actually talked to Judge Blackman about this, he was the city manager at the time, and he told me that they were, there were a lot of committees and a lot of meetings during the day, and eventually they sort of morphed into, well, why don't we just do it in a workshop setting in the evening? And then it sort of morphed into this, well, we're going to workshop it and then act on it the next week. So I think it was, I don't know, 20-plus years ago when, when the change was made. I don't think it was any one big change, it just sort of developed into that. Now, I don't think you have all those committees, and all we're doing now is work session one week, next week, council items. That's, that's the best I can do. There may be some historians around here, people that were more involved that could give a, a more in-depth answer, but that's a short version of what I got from Judge Blackman.
Sure, and that's great, I appreciate it. What's, what's most important to me is that a week, if you would, remains in place for, that'd be conversation within the public about what we're going to vote on. And I think that might be possible if the packet comes out a week before we have the work session. And I think that might be possible if the packet comes out a week before we have the work session, where everyone's aware of what we're discussing, we can engage with our constituents. They have that opportunity to come speak during citizen comments. We have that work session complete and then follow into our regular session. So in other words, we're not losing that, that week. That's just important to me to have the, you know, engage the, the public on that, as opposed to everyone's aware of what we're going to discuss. We discuss it in a, in a meeting, and then a few hours later, if you will, we follow up and we vote just on that. That's what's most important to me. And that's, I guess the question is, in that, could the packets be put out a week ahead of time prior to?
So the, the packet would go out on, let me just pull up a, a calendar. So for instance, for this meeting, the packet would have gone out on May 28th, Tuesday, May 28th, for the June 4th meeting.
Right.
Yeah, I think we, I don't, we'd have to think about P and Z, but I think when you know far enough ahead of time, we can make the schedule. If I've got any staff out there that, that thinks of any problems that might come up on this, let me know. But I think, you know, with enough warning and, and putting it into play, we could make that work.
Sure. And I'm just speaking for myself. Other councilmembers may feel another way. But I just want to share what was important. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Segarra.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm okay with, you know, two times a month. I'm okay with the time changes we got. Either way, I can go either way. But I agree, I think we need, as council members, more time to digest, you know, what we discuss on the workshop. You know, sometimes we'll take trips out there and once we get some feedback in the workshop. And the only other alternative would be if, if, like, for example, today, what we discussed today would be put in a council meeting two weeks from now. So that, that would mean we'd have two weeks instead of just one week to digest all this stuff. And so, you know, the timeline would remain the same, you know, Fridays. But you're, you're, you know, we're not voting it next week. We're voting it two weeks from today. And so we're always just making that shift. So, so that's just another option. But yeah, I agree. I think it would be a little bit of challenge just to discuss something and then just jump right in and vote for it. I mean, can be done, but I think we need more time on that part. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Segarra. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. I agree with Councilmember Boyd. I think it makes sense if we could, if staff can make it happen and we can get the packets a week in advance, that gives us time to look over the packets, do our own due diligence, meet with any community members or citizens that we need to meet with prior to coming to the meeting and the work, or the work session in the meeting. You know, you come here. Planning and zoning currently does it the same way. They have their, their work session or their workshop from 4:00 to 5:00, and then 5:00 starts their meeting and then they vote. So it's no different than what they're currently doing. I think we just have to work with staff and, and figure out the timing of when the packets go out. But I think, I mean, a week in advance is plenty for me, just speaking for myself. You know, a lot of times, a lot of these items, whether they're resolutions or consent agenda, they're items that are budgeted already. Aside from public hearings or, or discussion items, you know, there's not much to, to go back and forth on. And then I also believe in, in that this would help streamline these, these meetings. And as a former staff member myself, you know, staff, if we're here meeting till 11:00 at night every Tuesday, staff is here every Tuesday, and they have to report back to work in the morning. We may not have to, but they do. So thinking of them and their families as well, and the sacrifice that they make, we're certainly appreciative of y'all's time and, and don't want to hold you hostage anymore than we have to. So I think it, it makes sense all the way around. So thank you, Councilmember Solomon, for, for bringing this up. And hopefully, we can figure it out and make it work.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tim. First question, the two weeks out, oh, no, the consent agenda. Was your idea that things that we place, if we did actions right afterwards, that we propose, we, we, we would propose that it be by general consent, be placed on there?
No. Typically, what, what a city does is, is they'll propose, say, the sample agenda. And it's got things that we think may be consent agenda, but it's up to how y'all wanted to set it up. Some cities don't go through them at all.
Right.
Or some cities go through them by exception. What we've been doing is presenting every one. And so we would make all these presentations on consent agenda for, for discussion. Same thing with the ordinances.
I got you.
And then if there, there could be a motion to, after the work session, when you enter the council meeting section, there'd be a motion to either approve all the consent items or approve certain ones, remove certain ones for separate discussion. That would be up to the council. What, what staff would do is estimate what we think would be on consent. Then we're going to workshop them, each one with you. And then it would be up to the council how you want to do that.
And we can even propose, I know our rules of, rules of procedure outside of the governing standards still allows us to move that this be placed on the consent agenda. I'm not going to go into Robert Cruz's order right now. But the two weeks thing is, I, I like that idea still because it gives you time to work on stuff, especially after workshop, because if council want to do a motion of direction, you still have the time to, to game it as a staff, correct? Because if, if, if we, I'm thinking if we did, first, let me say this. I think the workshop thing became mission creep. We started to do it, we had workshops, we were already meeting twice, an official meeting. But I think doing this this way, I wasn't here, I wasn't coming to meetings 20 years ago because the Army had me doing other stuff. But I, I, I like the idea. But for the two weeks out, does that give staff more time to have full? Because I know sometimes when we, like now, as we review the agenda over the weekend, or whenever we get it prior to, getting the information and asking questions, you may have more, need more time to do the research for the question that we ask. Does that make sense?
No. I, I think if, if an agenda goes out on a Tuesday and council asks questions Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, that gives us, that, that should be more than enough time to answer questions. I mean, unless the next, you wait till the next Tuesday at 4:30 to ask the question.
Okay.
But most of the time, we have the answer anyway.
Got you. All right. I, I think that's all the questions I had. And this is, this is fluid, the agenda that you're proposing?
Oh, yes, sir. Just an example.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyd, this is your second time. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. So in summary, we'd have the workshop, the same format we're doing now. We'd roll into the, the regular meeting and we'd use the consent agenda, consent agenda format that we have.
Yes, sir.
Okay, got it. The, the start and finish time, I'm wondering if we're going to need to adjust that. Maybe not, if we were just rolling into it as a consent agenda right after, I wouldn't assume, but.
That one, I, I didn't really have an issue on because that, I mean, or a recommendation on because that's more of a council preference when you, when you want to, to start it. I mean, a lot of people do this during the day, but that might not be something that works well here. I don't know. I mean, I think you can see some people on there that do this at 8:30 in the morning. I believe it's, Round Rock does that, has their.
Well, I mean, I'd say let's entertain the discussion on what that would look like if we did do it in the morning. What benefits are in place?
Well, if, I think the, what they do is, they come in in the morning for a briefing, and then they leave. And then they come back at 6:00 for a council meeting. That, that works for staff. I don't know how well that works for council. That sounds kind of like almost double work for the council. Some people start the work session at 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock and, and then have the action items after 5:00.
Okay. Speaking for myself.
Yes, sir.
I think it's interesting, if we did do, because it's just two times a month, a morning workshop portion, possibly go right into the, well, I wouldn't say go right into it then because we don't have citizens that can attend. But perhaps come back at 5:00, knowing that we're going to have a shorter meeting, to give that opportunity for our citizens to, to speak and engage. This is my thoughts on it.
Yes, sir. And that, from the staff, we don't really, that's what works best for you guys. We can work with it either way.
Do you have anything else, Councilmember Boyd?
So we're not making a motion of direction today, are we, on this?
You do not have to.
I'm sorry. We don't have to.
No, you don't. It's entirely up to the council. And I might also add, there are some other things to consider. There is, there is a cost savings because we typically have three officers here. And between the three of them, that's about $171 an hour. We'll have sign language here that's about $192 an hour. And then we, this just ends up creating lots of double work. Most of the people that are doing that are exempt employees. Except you're going to see on our budget here in a minute, there's some federal changes to that. I don't know that all of them are going to continue to be exempt. Some of them may be getting overtime in the future. But some of the soft costs that we have are producing the, essentially what we do is we produce the same agenda twice. You publish it twice. All the communications people that are, that are here, that are, that are putting on, on the web or on TV, all the staff four times a week. And just, we're in constant agenda mode. Every week, we're, we're producing an agenda. And so all of those things, in most cases, are double work. We're doing the same work twice.
Got you. And the last, last thing I'll say on this is, we've heard, we've heard citizens talk about how important it is that they can make this, our meeting, as well as sometimes KISD meetings. But we also hear folks say we want to be available after work to actually make it to the meetings. So I, I'd say it'd be good to get some citizen feedback on this before we make a decision. I think we've set up good enough parameters here. But that's, that's just my opinion.
Can I just ask for clarity? Are you referring to citizen feedback on the time, like the projection of time and the dates?
The time in particular.
The time in particular. Thank you.
And, and I think the school district's second and fourth, the regular meetings, like, like a lot of places, they, they have ad hoc meetings and separate workshops. But typically, they, they're second, fourth. So if, if we were to do this, I think you'd probably want to do first and third Tuesdays.
That sounds good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boyd. Councilmember Solomon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Pro Tim. Yeah, I think that it just would, would work in terms of just streamlining, like Councilmember Ramon said, that it would just streamline everything, and it would save money. My question would be, is in terms of planning and zoning, would that be hard to kind of like coordinate? Would they have to change their, their meetings to?
I don't believe they would. Ms. Revel, I, he'll, he'll come up and be able to help us out with that.
Yeah, meeting times.
So the way planning and zoning is structured, they hear items that are related to council and they hear items that are not related to council. But for the most part, their schedule can be adjusted to, along with the council schedule, to reflect the council schedule, so we shouldn't have an issue.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And then another question I would have, Mr. Kegel, in reference to requirements of a meeting, of meetings for city council by law. Is it two meetings or four?
It's the charter, and it's two meetings a month.
Two meetings. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon. Councilmember Adams, this is your second time.
So right now, this, so tracking, Councilmember Boyd is saying, we want to get feedback. So should this be a motion of direction for staff to come back, to do feedback and come back with a complete proposal for the next meeting? Would that be in order?
That would be in order if, if that's what you want. But we'd need a little direction if you want, if you like this sample agenda, if there's changes or.
I believe Ms. Clemens has something. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to mention that the governing standards annual review is coming up the next workshop at June 18th. And this, this may change with that. And so you're, you could do a motion of direction that included that in the review of the governing standards, or we could just discuss it in the review of the governing standards.
Then I, I'd do, then actually, that would be a tabling to the governance standard. No, no, I don't want a table. I would do a motion of direction to give some citizen feedback on the time and the format, and have it ready for the governor's standards review.
So you're asking, you're asking staff to get the feedback from the?
No, actually, we should be doing that. We, that, strike that, motion of the direction, come back with a proposal based off the agenda that's presented. And with any feedback the council members provide for time. And bring it back for the governing standards review. And I'm sorry, that's a long motion of direction.
So just to recap that, you are requesting that we bring back the proposed agenda with feedback from council members, from our citizens, on proposed time of our scheduled meetings to be reviewed during governing standards, during the governing standards meeting?
Yes.
Madam Secretary, did you get that?
Yes, I'm just finishing, taking note.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, there's not a second.
I've got it. Excuse me.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second with the, with the comment.
Go ahead, Councilmember Boyd.
I feel like this is the most clear, to be honest. I'd like to hear what the attorney has to say.
I don't know that the direction in the actual, what you want me to bring back is particularly clear. With the consensus, what, what I would do with this motion is bring back changes to the governing standards that I believe represent the consensus of what we've discussed about tonight. And then you would tell me to change it, how you want me to change it. And then you would have a vote on your governing standards in the future.
And that makes sense. And that gives us this week to hear from citizens who determine to reach out to us to share their opinion on which direction is the most appropriate.
It, it would actually give you three weeks because this would be the, governing standards would be on the 18th workshop for action on June 25th.
Go ahead, Councilmember Boyd. Are we restating that motion? For clarity, Ms. Clemens, what is the best way to go ahead and move this forward so that we're all on the same page?
The basics I got of the motion was that we're going to come back with a proposal to include with the governing standards review on Ju-, on June 18th.
Yes, sir. Okay. And we have a second still, by Councilmember Boyd.
Yes, and this also gives our local newspaper an opportunity to, what do you call those things? A poll or a survey to, to get feedback to work with.
Outstanding. Thank you. Councilmember Alvarez.
I just wanted to clarify that this comes back on June 18th as a, it would be an action item with the governing standards? So we'd vote on it at that time? Or we vote on it on the 25th?
25th.
Got you. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarity. Mr. Solomon, Councilmember Solomon, did you have something else that you wanted to add?
Well, I just want to get a clarity on, in terms of we are coming back and we're adding this to the government standards? If this is voted on, I mean, this, if this is approved?
If this motion of direction is approved by the majority of council tonight, then I'll bring back at your, at your June 18th workshop, I propose. then I'll bring back at your June 18th workshop a proposal. Also, I will be looking at other things in the governing standards you'll be able to discuss, but I will include what I believe the information that I got from the consensus of council tonight, I will give to you in draft form, and then the council can either direct further changes, or they can the next week approve that or disapprove.
Okay, and so that's the draft form of the way, what time?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Similar to what we already have, what Mr. Cagle presented?
Right.
Okay.
There are a couple of things in the governing standards that this implicates, and so I would have to go through it. So I can't tell you right now, as we sit here, all of the changes that would need to be made, but there are a couple of sections in the governing standards that would need to be updated if we're going to twice a month, and we're changing the times and doing twice a month meetings with the workshop beforehand. So I will draft those the best way I think represents what I've heard tonight. And again, you will have all the ability in the world to mark that up and tell me to do something different. And it can come back that next week to be voted on June 25th. But also, the governing standards, you have, per the governing standards, you have to July to make those changes as well. So if you weren't ready to do that by the end of June, it could also be postponed to July.
Thank you.
I've got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor of the motion as presented?
To bring back the proposal along with the governing standards on addressing the agenda and time.
On the 18th?
On the 18th. That's why I say it's part of the governing standards review.
All in favor, vote yes. All opposed, no. We have five voting yes in favor. Thank you. Madam Secretary?
DS 24037, receive quarterly financial report.
Thank you, Ms. Tangeling.
Thank you, Mayor Proter. Thank you, council. I'm just waiting for the clicker. Yes, sir. Okay, this item is for the quarterly financial report, the second quarter of the fiscal year 2024. We're going to go to the executive dashboard through the major operating funds, and we are going to look at some ARPA funding update. For the executive dashboard, when it comes to staffing indicators, we have 104 employees that were separations in this last two quarters, 52 in the second quarter, and you see 154 new hires. I want to point out that 21 are in here from the veteran cemetery, the new employees that we acquired from the veteran cemetery. For the new constructions and permits, we have 294 single-family residential compared to last year. We only have 43. And you see the sales tax information from 2016 to 2023. The actual sales taxes is the green line. It was going up comparing to budget, but now the sales taxes are stabilized a little bit. For this quarter, compared to last fiscal year, we only increased by $20,000. The total of the quarter of sales taxes for fiscal year 23 were 17.7 year-to-date, and for fiscal year 2024 is 17.7. This is your breakdown of sales tax by economic category. Now, we're going to talk about major funds. For general fund, it's the second quarter. So anything that is about 50%, and your revenues means good. Everything less than 50% expenditures will be good. As we all know, always taxes and fees, property taxes we collected at the beginning of the first quarter, and the license and permits are a little bit down, 46%. The charges for services are down 42%, but that's because $700,000 or just $800,000 are from the Gulf that we moved those revenues to enterprise fund. The total revenues are 67% of budget for the general fund. Your expenses, we are 58.7. You can see here, we are less than 50% except for the transfers out. And then, you see recreation services, they reduce the expenses as because of the Gulf having moved to the enterprise fund. This is your next change for the general fund, $23.9 million, and your fund balance ending is at 55.7 in this quarter. Now, for water and super fund, it's a little bit easier because we only have operating revenues over here. There are 47% and increase of 1.4 million from last fiscal year. The operating expenses are 27%, and the change in net position is 3.8 million, and the net position is 16 million. For your solid waste fund, you have 53% on operating revenues and 42% on your expenses. Your change in net position is 1.3, and your net position ending is 8.8 million. Your drainage fan is on 50% on operating revenues, and your operating expenses are only 24%. You change net position for $160,000, and your net position ending is 2.3 million. For your aviation funds, your operating revenues are 48%, your expenses are 40%. You see a decrease of your non-operating revenues, and this is because of the ARPA funding we were getting in fiscal year 2023 for operational expenses. Your change in net position is 0.09 million, and your net position ending is 1.7 million. Your hotel occupancy tax fund, your hotel occupancy taxes are 21%. Your total revenues are 27%, however, your expenditures are only 28%. Your net change in fund balance is $220,000. And your fund balance ending is at 2.5 million. And we have the street maintenance fund. Your total revenues for the street maintenance fee is at 50%. Your total expenditures is 14%, but that's because all the maintenance work we do for the streets are in summertime, so you will see an increase for the next quarter. Your net change fund balance is 4.05. And your fund balance ending is at 13.9%. That's all for the funds. Now, we're going to go through the ARPA funding update. For our hotel occupancy tax fund, we allocated 2.5 million, and we spent $1 million year-to-date. Everything that is marked over here is completed. The two projects that we have over here on completed are the age bank replacement, that is on work in progress right now, and the grants to the arts. For the general fund, we allocated 7.6 million, and we have spent 7.2 million. You can see most of them are completed over here. For your governmental CIP fund, 17.8 million was allocated, and 3.9 million has been spent. And for all appropriations, it was 1.100,000 allocated, 480,000 spent. Out of the $29 million, we have spent 12.6, however, we have encumbered or obligated 11.9 million to this point out of those 12.6. Now, we have some projects that were completed, and some projects that are not going to going to work for the ARPA funding, and we are requesting for motion of direction to allocate or reallocate these funds. One of the programs was the summer youth hiring program. There was a little bit interest on this program. We have barely any candidates. We had two candidates last time we went out, and they actually didn't qualify for the program. So we are recommending to reappropriate that amount of $106,000 to the Central Texas Workforce Commission Program. That is a program for youth. They work with the KISD kids, and they're going to work especially, specifically with Colleen kids. And the proposed allocation is the $106,000 towards the commission program for the workforce. For the speed mitigation, we're requesting the $90,000 to be reallocated to the Gap sidewalk improvements. For Conder Park, we want to reallocate this amount to the Gap sidewalk improvements and Lone Branch Park. And for the Lions Club trail upgrades, it's only $2,700 that we need at the AK Wells Trails upgrades. This, we would like to have a motion of direction to move these funds around, and in that way, we have a better change to spend these funds by the deadline.
Ms. Tangeling, we do have a question. Councilmember Boyd?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. Okay. Make sure I'm clear. So, the speed mitigation, there was allocated 250,000. We've already spent 111,000?
We have spent?
That's on slide 31, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. If you would send to the council where that was spent, it was my understanding that we were going to decide based on our program that was in place where that would go. I didn't know, we're already pulling from that. The Gap sidewalks, make sure I'm clear, we're proposing to take the Gap sidewalk funding of 90,000 that's available and reallocated to engineering?
Yes, for the Gap sidewalk improvements. It's a project that engineering is running.
Okay, all right, okay. Yeah, that's all I got right now. I'm a little surprised by that. The trail upgrade funding is still in place, correct? 100,000 at 25K apiece for each of the four trails?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you.
I would like to have a motion of direction if you guys can give me one.
Councilmember Segaro?
You need a motion of direction on this one, to reallocate this money right here?
You agree, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to say about the summer youth program, hiring program. I participated in that many years ago through our Texas workforce, and they do a really, really good job. Some of the kids even end up working here for the city, you know? And so, I had a couple at my office, but it is a great program, and I know that they do a good job. You know, they have a hiring event too, where, you know, we went out there and we got to see the kids do that. So I'm glad to see that. I'm glad to see that we're doing something with that. So, but with all that said, I'll go ahead and make a motion, direction to reallocate as presented.
Do we have a second to that motion? We have a second by Councilmember Solomon?
Question.
Question posed by Councilmember Boyd. Yes, sir.
Did you have something?
Okay. Another question was, the reallocation is going, I'm not clear on where the allocation is going for the speed mitigation of 90,000.
That's what I, it looks like, that's because engineering is in charge, it's going to sidewalks. I mean, that's the recommendation.
To take the speed?
Is to add, is to take the money from the speed mitigation and put additional money to sidewalks.
Okay. I am opposed to that because when we voted to establish that funding, it was for potential speed humps, speed bumps, and all that stuff. And it was difficult to get that established for just that. And now, we're talking about potentially using it for sidewalks, and we haven't done anything on Gap sidewalks just yet. So personally, I think we should at least leave that speed mitigation funding there in place. I mean, I was the council member who talked about the different streets in my neighborhood, in my subdivisions that had these issues in defined funding. So somebody's kind of got to qualify that for me.
Well, we, yes, sir, and I understand. We've done a lot of speed studies, engineering, and along with Transportation Division. We've done every speed study that has come in, we've looked at it, we've done it. A lot of the issues that we have with rumble strips, work approaching stop signs to slow people down. Sinage has been working. We have flashing signs that we put out in certain areas that's been working. We haven't had an issue. A lot of the, and I will tell you probably about, between 85% and 90% of the studies that were requested don't result in major issues happening. So the things we've been able to do, you want to start at the lowest level to mitigate the speed, and we started with signage, and it's been working. So like I said, some of the rumble strips we put on Rosewood is work to stop the traffic, the slowest speeding down at the far end of Rosewood by where it intersects with Chaparral. So those things have happened. They just, they haven't been as costly as putting the speed humps and bumps out there, and we have had no issues where those were required as of right now, sir. So we have bought additional signage, the flashing speed signage, these things that we've seen that are working. We have some of those in stock, we have some of that money to use for future studies as well. So that's why you still have money out there.
Yeah, my concern is taking the funding that does exist away where we may need it in the future, right? Let's talk about, if you would, these, the 90,000 going towards Gap sidewalks. Have we identified where those areas would be? I know there's areas in my district, since I got on council, I've been asking for sidewalks on.
I know the school along Stan Sluter, that we, I think it was one that you had brought up, sure, out there.
Will Springs.
Will Springs. We're also looking out near the Shoemaker. It was some gaps out there. We were looking, but there were several gaps that we've looked at that are going to be addressed in this process. Mr. Zager is in the process of going out and getting a contractor to come in that's going to do that work for us. So yes, we do, it's going to be a costly project, where you got to start putting concrete on the ground with the cost of concrete these days. So we do want, we see the need to plus that up at this time, to get as much of that done as possible to create these safe routes to schools and in neighborhoods where you have those gaps where kids are not allowed to walk. You've got a sidewalk here, then you've got this gap, and then you've got a sidewalk. If we can fill those gaps, I think it would be a lot more beneficial at this time. That's just my assessment of it, sir.
Sure, in my, the summary I get out of it, you know, it is a little frustrating, but the data is showing that there's not as much issues with speeding based on the speed studies that have been done. We've identified another area to address gaps in sidewalks, specifically some in the areas that I had bought up a long time ago, which I hope, you know, do get prioritized and taken care of. So it's something for something. But I did just need to share my understanding of it prior to us getting to this point, what the intention was versus where we are now.
Yes, sir, and we will continue to do speed studies as they come in and address those issues. But it just has not elevated to a second level of that mitigation plan where the resident has to go out and get the signatures and all that stuff. Because when we do the studies, and the studies show that it's 30 miles an hour, and we do the study, and 98% of the people are going 30 miles an hour or less, or between 30, 20, 25, and 35, there's not really a speeding issue there. But we do add signage, and it kind of lowered that a little bit for us.
Sure, and I understand, I respect, you know, the data is the data. This reminds me of the Thousand Oaks subdivision where I was pushing for speed limit signs and all that down Onion Road, but the data showed something different. So I do respect that. I'll just ask that you guys keep me impressed on where the sidewalk projects are and the rollout, because I'm still getting questions about these.
We'll get your list, sir. I can assure you that Mrs. Zager has a list he's been working on, and we'll get that to you. It's not an issue.
Okay, that's all I got, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thanks. Summer youth employment thing was one of my proposals. I, no issue with transferring the money, but my concern is to make sure that the money is for Colleen students that are residents, not KISD students, but Colleen students. So I'll agree with that motion of direction, provided that that is the caveat for that. So it only goes to Colleen residents.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Solomon?
Yes, thank you. In reference to that Gap sidewalk improvement, when you're talking about improving your sidewalks, is that you already have designated areas that you're going to be repairing, right? is that you already have designated areas that you're going to be repairing, right?
Yes, sir. And we, just Gap sidewalks around schools, not around other areas of the city, is over $3 million worth of needs.
And that's where you, you're going to start it first? Those, there's different schools, not just one side of town?
Oh, no, sir. No, sir. It's all over town and we need to get this money either spent or committed by the end of this year.
Got you. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. We need to, is there a second? Councilmember Segaro made the motion. We had Councilmember Solomon second. We're going to go ahead and cast our votes. All in favor of the motion as presented? Any opposed? No. Looks like we are not tallying.
It's just not on the screen. It's five to zero.
So, we have five to zero in favor of the motion as presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
DS 24038, FY 2025 budget preview.
Thank you, Mr. Kegel.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor and council, we, this is just a preview. It's a broad overview and meant to, to let, kind of let you know where we are at this point in the process, where we're going and to get some feedback or future feedback from you. So, just to start, this is the, the schedule. July 2nd, we'll deliver you a budget and a presentation. And the first public hearing is on July 23rd. Then, on August 16th, this is where you set a maximum tax rate. It, you can, you can, in the future, you can change it by going lower, but if you change it by going higher, you have to start the process over. So, the vote, the record vote on August 6th is not setting the rate, it's setting the maximum tax rate that you would consider. And we just threw the next one in there. If we are at some point still considering a geo bond election, the, the deadline to call that is August 19th. And then, if after the first public hearing, if increases or additions are made to the budget, there has to be another public hearing and that would be September 3rd. And then, September 10th, we'd need to adopt the budget and tax, tax rates. Then, I will start with the general fund. And so, what I'm giving you here is some, some, this stuff doesn't add up. I'm giving you some overview of the total revenue increase that we're expecting in the general fund is about $860,000. That's less than 1% increase over our current budget. So, some of the reasons for such a small increase, if you, sales tax is our second largest revenue. You can see back in '23, we got 35.1 million. And this year's budget, we started with 36.08 million and now, we're estimating 35.2. While that is below budget, it's still slightly above what we got last year. And then, next year, we're estimating 35.5, which is barely above our '23 actual. And then, about, this is based on the current tax rate, would be 1.1 million addition due to new construction and increases in values. Also, the proposed fees would be an additional 180,000. Now, we're losing about 630,000 over the prior budget, 630,000 over the reimbursement for the state for the disabled veterans exemption, but it's actually 1.2 million less than what we expected. The reason for that, more cities are now qualifying and more cities are now applying for the reimbursement, primarily was the City of El Paso and El Paso County applied, took a big chunk of the money. So, while the pie is fixed, the number of cities receiving reimbursements is going up. And then, the transfers from other funds into the general fund is 720,000 up. So, as we discuss the exemptions, you can see that the largest one that we have of all of our exemptions of 3.6 million is the disabled veterans. And I'll say this upfront, we're discussing this, not in opposition to it, but the state granted this and we're asking them to reimburse us because Colleen residents are disproportionately impacted by this. We are greater now, the City of Colleen by itself is greater than this projected statewide impact when, when this was proposed and it has been for a number of years. So, all we're asking is that the state reimburse us for the exemption they gave. So, if you look, you want to look at, yes, every city has schools, every city has churches. They're, it's roughly equivalent across the state. Some may be a little more, some may be a little less, but, but generally, every city has them. The disabled veterans exemption, there are many, I can tell you, there are many city managers in the state that have no idea what it even is. It's not even a rounding error in their budget. They don't, they don't pay attention to it. And that, I think, is what people expected would be across the state. But, but this benefit that the state gave falls disproportionately on the Colleen taxpayers and that's what we're talking about. And the reason we talk about it is because it's an incredibly significant number. Now, with the preliminary tax information that we have, we are over $2 billion in exemption. And the reason I have this line here is every year after 2019, the increase in veterans exemption has been greater than all the new construction, commercial, multifamily, single family in the city for the past six years and its past seven out of, out of the past eight because in 2018, it was slightly greater at 123 million versus 122 million in new taxable value. And you can see, we are, we're doubling, this amount is doubling now about every three years, just a little over every three years. And you can see now of our tax base, it's 20%. Well, and so, on the revenue side, as I said, little over 800,000 in new revenue. Now, I'm going to show you a bunch of numbers that are increased expenses. We also had decreases. So, that's what I'm saying, it doesn't necessarily foot. You'll see all that, you'll see it all added up when we present the budget. But we had a lot of major expense changes, our IT due to our new, excuse me, personnel and financial software. We're the last thing, we're finally, the last year moving, mowing, which is a general fund function, moving it out of solid waste. The Bell County Communication Center, you heard about them tonight, that's a $207,000 increase to us. One, because their budget went up, but then, that was compounded because our number of calls as a percentage went up too. So, this past year, it worked the other way for us. Our percentage of calls decreased a little bit. It goes back and forth year to year. But we took the double hit on an increase in budget plus increased percentage of our calls. Code enforcement abatement, abatement and disposal cost, this is where we're going out and mowing properties where the, or doing demolition, hauling stuff away to the landfill. The appraisal districts budget, our portion is up 50,000. We have two economic development agreements. This is one year of each of them, 43,000 for Don Gin, 30,000 for Southern Roots. And you heard a request tonight for $20,000 additional from KEDC. Those add up to 1.3 million. Then, compensation, a 3% COLA is about, for civil service, that's police and fire, uniform services, about 1.5 million. The step increases that go along with that, 473,000. And for the rest of the employees, 3% COLA costs 765,000. So, the civil service is a little over, around 50% of the employees, but it's about 70% of the pay increase goes to them because they have a step plan, which the rest of the employees don't have, plus on general, their salaries are a little higher. Then, I told you earlier about Department of Labor changes that make more people eligible for overtime. You'll see this line here in, in every one of the funds, but this is by far the largest impact is in the general fund. So, there's major expense increases of about 4.1 versus about 870,000 in new revenue. That doesn't work. So, we're faced with either making some major cuts or finding some different revenue. Now, the interesting thing is, our current tax rate is well under the no new revenue rate. This would take about two and a half cents on the tax rate to solve. We would still be under the no new revenue rate with a two and a half cent tax rate increase. And there we go. Also, one, only one package because of this, because of that imbalance, only recommending one package because we will be opening the new Rosa Herford Center in fall, early winter. We need employees there. So, that's what this package represents. Then, what's not included in the budget? Fire Station 4 Personnel, we're expecting to get a safer grant for that. There are unfunded decision packages with about 30 FTEs, 4.2 million. Those unfunded packages that are mostly capital of some sort, 2.5 million. All that adds up to $9 million. And when you're thinking, if you think about this, if you're thinking about on the tax rate side, one penny equals almost exactly $1 million. And coincidentally, our losses, our revenue loss in the general fund on the veterans exemption is greater than that. If the state would just reimburse us, we could do all of this. On the water and sewer fund, you heard some today earlier about a rate increase. I'll get into that in just a moment. It's 100, 150,000 dollars and the commercial is 150,000 dollars. The, the rest is due to growth, same thing on sewer. No rate increase on sewer, all due to growth. Now, our expenses, WCID, smaller increase this year than we've had in the past, but almost $100,000 between water and sewer. Our debt increase, 1.3 million that goes to WCID, if you remember, all of the improvements to the Belton Water Treatment Plant. Then, a decrease of 3 million because Harker Heights bought in and assumed our debt on the wastewater treatment plant. And then, BRA has an increase in their water charge to us. It's about $30,000. So, that's about a million and a half when you add the pluses and the minuses. And also, we're entered, we're recommending a pump and lift station replacement program that would be in the operating budget of 1.1 million. And, excuse me. In compensation, the 3% COLA is 214,000. Department of Labor changes, that's the overtime issue, 16,000. Fleet replacement and capital projects, that's funding for water and sewer line replacement. And one, construction inspector, this is significant savings over doing this by, from hiring an engineering firm. We're spending three or four times this on a firm right now. So, the major expenses are about 2.6 million. This just gives you an idea of our rate increases from WCID. What you don't see is, is 25 out here, that was the, the 1%, similar to what we had in '15 through '18. You saw this chart already, but I just want to put into perspective, we based that survey that you saw based on 5,700 gallons of usage a month because that's our average, that's the City of Colleen average. So, right now, if you're using 5,700 gallons and you have a 5 eighths inch or a three quarter, which is the vast majority of residential, you'll pay $15 for 2,000 gallons. And then, the next 3,700, 3,700, you'd pay 3.38, $3.38 for that next one per 1,000 gallons that you used. The only people that are going to get a, a rate increase on the residential side would be people that use 15,000 to 30,000 gallons. Then, what they would do is pay $15 for their first 2,000. Then, the, then the 2,000 to 15,000 gallons, they're going to pay 3.38, that stays the same. And then, only then, the usage that they have over 15,000 would the rate increase kick in. And then, a larger rate increase for those over 30,000. Now, all the water that you're using in your house, it's very rare for someone to use more than 15,000 and it's just inside the house. Most of anything over 15,000 is going outside, it's going in your yard, it's washing cars, going down the gutter, something like that. And, and part of what Mr. Reynolds alluded to, if you look at a chart of our water usage, if we start with January and end with December, it's a bell curve. But we have to provide a system that in January through all that time, for one day, for the peak day, we have to build a system that can do that 365 days a year. So, what you have is a really good customer, someone that uses the same, and it doesn't matter if they're industrial and use a million gallons a month, if they use the same every month, they're a very beneficial customer. Same thing with a resident that uses 10,000 a month. But if you have someone that uses 5,000 a month for eight months and the other four, they use 35,000, that's what pushes the, the bell curve in the middle and those are expensive customers and they cost the rest. So, that's why we're recommending, and these are modest rate increases. As you can see, it's about $150,000 in revenue on the water side. And as Mr. Reynolds said, it's a minority of the customers that pay for that. But if you don't have a rate structure like this, the people that do use low amounts of water on a regular basis end up subsidizing those with the dramatically different usage during the year. Then, Mr. Reynolds, I think he adequately described the rate increases on the commercial side. We have around 55,000 accounts. Then, to the solid waste fund. Well, it's going, there we go. So, no rate increase proposed here. All the revenue growth either comes, the revenue increases come from growth in, in customers' usage, getting more money for recycling. We are charging, we have been charging more for non-residents using the transfer station. We've been giving away our services there almost. So, there's some revenue increase there. Significant increases that we have every year in, in transport and disposal. Then, we're, are recommending significant replacements in fleet and trying to get ahead of the curve to get some additional garbage trucks to meet the demand that we know is coming. And the lead time on these, some of them, it's longer than a fire engine now. That, I never thought we would see that, but some of these trucks have been taken over two years to get. But we, we believe this will get us well into any increased routes that we need to, that we need to add. And I did have this question earlier and it came up, I believe, in, in citizen comments a few weeks ago. We are not serving Turnbull Ranch and our contract does not require us to do so. So, that is not an additional demand on solid waste services. They'll have to contract with someone else to do that. 3% COLA, the Department of Labor changes. We are recommending some FTEs and we can afford it under these, this rate structure. One is a litter crew, that would be a three-person crew with a pickup and a trailer to do litter pickup around the city, especially hotspots, but even on a, on a regular basis, making regular routes around the city to improve the image of the city. And then, four solid waste workers that help with bulk pickup on the rear loaders. Right now, we've got one person back there and I think we will save this amount of money in workers' compensation costs. We'll speed up the routes, we'll reduce overtime and it will save wear and tear on our employees. Those that are picking up the bulk stuff, oftentimes, we need more than one person to do it and that puts two on the back of the truck. Otherwise, if there is help, the driver's going to have to stop, get out and, and help the person on the end of the rear loader. As I mentioned, there are two front loads. These are addition to the fleet. So, I will go back and say fleet replacements for 25 and then, we're catching up on some that we were going to replace in a few years. and then we're catching up on some that we were going to replace in the future, we're moving them, moving them up. And then, adding two additions to the fleet that will help us out in the interim, but also be prepared when we need to add additional routes. Then a forklift to be used at the recycling center, and so that's a major increases of 3.8 million, all done within the current rate structure. There was one, one FTE that was not approved, and at this point. Then I just wanted to give you an idea, as I mentioned earlier, our transport and disposal rates, that's the line over here, it's the cost per ton. You can see what it's been doing over time, and since '21, it's really taken off. But our rate has stayed the same, the residential rate has stayed the same, just under 20, just under $20 a month for nine, nine years. Now, typically, you should look at that and get very worried and say, something bad is going on, we're digging ourselves a deep hole. But what we have been doing, at least the past three years, is getting costs out of the solid waste fund that didn't belong there. As you notice, it was about a million, too, that we moved out over four years, this is the last year, to general fund for right-of-way mowing, it should have been in general fund all along. So I don't know how much longer we can continue this trend, but we can definitely do it this I'm almost to the end. The hot fund, about 300,000 in new revenue, most of it attributable to short-term rental revenue, charges for service at the convention center, interest income, the 3% COLA, a little more money, we're doing a little better in mixed beverage, and a little more, and, excuse me, the 32,000, that's an increase in expense, but it also means there's an increase in revenue on the other side. And a little more money on the rodeo for increase of 64, almost 65,000. Street maintenance fund, about 300,000. We expect to, just increase growth, the rate stays the same. And a recommendation here is the additional money goes to street replacement. We feel like we're pretty good with the money at this point in time that we have going to street maintenance. So, you know, we issued debt, and we're using a portion of this for street removal and replacement. We've got Gilmer going on right now. We just bid out Bunny Trail, which fortunately came in a little under budget. If we do the same thing on, if we get the same result on Watercrest, we believe we're going to have enough money, and with an additional 300,000, to put into Stagecoach and start the first of three or four phases to replace Stagecoach. And that, that engineering is underway right now. But that is the plan, and so, oops, almost forgot, golf. That'll be the last one. Just to give you a little bit of historical, you can see back in 2007, it lost 407,000. We contracted it out in May of 2019, which is actually FY 2019, and you can see the results that we've been receiving. We dropped from large negatives to small, to small positive. Now we're getting larger increases in the bottom line. And before, what we had to do previous to '24, this was all in the Parks Department, we just had to separate the costs. Now this is in its own enterprise fund. It's no longer in the Parks budget. What's not included, we need significant irrigation work. The retaining wall on, actually 18, but there's, there's some other retaining walls out there that need, need some work. The engineering's underway. This, the only number on here that I can tell you is solid is this one. The rest of these are estimates, and we don't really know what they're going to come in. But we had $85,000 budgeted for bunker renovation. We just received the bids, and the lowest bid was $500,000. So we're having to back up, figure out what we're going to do there. But if you think about, when you go back to this number, we're generating about this much in excess revenue for '25, about 200,000. We can, if we have a future CO issue from the general fund, we should tag this on for somewhere between 2 and 3 million. And the golf course would pay their share of that, the whole 2 to 3 million, to probably deal for sure with this one, with these three. They're critical to the operations of the golf course. This retaining wall, the fear is if that continues to fail, we could lose the 18th green, and we're already losing portions of the 18th fairway. You can get a look at it here. This is the portion of the fairway, the green is, is back over here, and there's, on the back of the green, there's worse failures than, than this. So the engineering's underway, and we'll see what, what the costs come in, and then we'll have to figure out a way to deal with this. So, once again, this is a broad overview. I think all the funds are in very good shape, except the general fund is, is the one issue with a very small increase in revenue due to a number of factors. And then, I would say a 3% pay increase is not even, doesn't even keep up with inflation. But considering the spot we're in, that was the most I could recommend. So I'd like to get any feedback you want to have tonight, any feedback in the future, but we'll come back in July with a proposed budget for you. Be happy to answer any questions.
You have a few questions, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Portem. Acknowledging and understanding that we're a growing city, it's important that we are maintaining what needs to be maintained. We've got areas that need to be addressed, such as the golf course that came out, I believe it was about 5.1 million. I did a tour with a couple of the council members of the golf course, and yes, it's a golf course, but it's a city function that's going to, that's bringing in money now, finally, and it's highly used. But more importantly than that, if you would, is the 30 full-time employee positions, that was at about 6 million, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir.
Yes. If you would eventually get that to the council, the list of what those are.
Absolutely. We'll give you the whole, yes, sir. Detail on, not just the positions, but what they do and the discussion. Yes, sir.
Sure, and I was just going to point out, because we need each and every one of these positions to sustain our operations and to balance things out for our city. So I'm curious to see what options could be in place to make sure that we can fund some of these high priority items, especially our, our full-time employees. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Mr. Cagle, can you go back to the sales tax projection?
Yes, sir.
I know it's way in the front.
There it is.
There it is. I do have a slight concern, I'm a little conservative on the budgeting side. We forecasted 35.2, and what, what, we're forecasting 35.2 million. I'm a little concerned that we budgeted 35.5. How much of a detriment if we just, we kept the forecast the same? I know it may cause an overage.
Oh, that's, I mean, it's just math, $350,000.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we don't over-forecast and base our budgeting decision based off a higher number, and then, I would rather that all of a sudden, the sales tax increase.
Yes, sir.
Before we then budget for it. So if we can look at doing a more conservative, I would even say, flat 35 million, if possible, just to be safe.
And this, this is really a statewide issue. If you, you look, the, the best way to look at this is a rolling 12-month average. And while every month is still an increase, the rate of those increases has been going down.
Yeah.
Across the state, not just us. Obviously, there are people that are in better shape, some in worse, but we're getting really close, that 12-month average to being a zero percent.
Right. And that's, and that's why I want to be extra cautious in making that projection. Thanks.
Mr. Cagle, would you say that, you know, there's been a lot of talk about the city not spending money or not allocating any funds, cutting back? And when we're looking at this, there's two primary ways that a municipality makes their funds, makes their money, right? Would that be property taxes and sales taxes?
Those are the two largest.
Is that a true statement? And so, while you mentioned the unfunded mandate that we have with the sales tax, I'm sorry, with the property tax, of course, we are not trying to take away benefit, but we are just asking that the state help us out with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this something that we would put as an initiative with our lobbying firm to get back on the table in the September or October timeframe? When do we need to make sure we put some more emphasis on this for our people that are helping us with this?
Yeah, we do that this summer, but I will promise you, they are on point on this and working all the time. It is, they know it's their number one over anything else that they have. It's 1 through 100, as far as their task, they know that, and they, they work constantly on it. I get, I get some updates. We don't know exactly what the total representation, who's going to be, you know, in the, the new legislature, but they're already reaching out to everyone and laying the groundwork, looking for a different proposal. I mean, honestly, last year, Representative Shine led the charge and looked for a grand solution that did not work. And I think this year, we, we look at small ball more, look at something just to deal with Bell County. And I think there's some coalition forming around that.
Okay.
To, to deal with the, with the Bell County cities, those that are hurt the hardest. Our numbers are, I think they're the largest in the state, but on a percentage basis, our neighbors that don't get reimbursed, Harker Heights and Nolanville are hurt a lot worse than we are on a percentage basis.
Sure, sure. And then, when we start looking outside of the box, ways in which we can generate revenue, obviously, it's not going to happen overnight, but increasing our sales tax would be one way. That's a long-term.
It is.
Solution, but we do have things in the pipeline. So while we understand that the reality is, we did not increase our sales tax prior to, is that correct, the last cycle? Did we not make a major increase?
Yeah, oh, we have. I don't have the presentation in front of me, but the past couple of years, we've had some pretty good increases. But the, the thing to keep in mind, if you look at how to compare, how to compare us to, say, Nolanville, or compare us to Houston, you figure out what one penny of tax, of sales tax generates per person. And while we're the 19th largest city in the state, on that comparison, we're probably number 500 or so in our sales tax generation. We could talk all night about why that is. You can look at a city like Round Rock that has a major sales tax generator that generates sales tax from all over the state and Dell Computer.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
But would you say that actively, just based on the things that we have done, on the positive side at this point, like, something like Anthem Park, is that something that's going to give us potentially in the long run?
Yes. I believe it, I believe it will. I believe it will allow us to gain back some, if you want to say, market share for the area that we've lost to other cities. I feel certain that will get some of that back.
So all is not lost, it's just strategically, over time, there is a way for us to get, get it going. Thank you so much. Other questions? Saying none, thank you, Mr. Cagle.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
Our Q24006, discuss establishment of a charter review committee for the Colleen City Charter.
Thank you. This is an item, a request for a future agenda item brought forward by Councilmember Adams. I'll turn it over to you now, sir.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Portem. I, back after we would table this, and I asked the council now, election's over, we've got some other things going on, if y'all would consider this. At that time, I will give you my idea. I don't want to belabor and violate the Open Meeting Act and go into details of it, but I would humbly ask the council to approve my motion, and if I can make it now, nobody else, I will take any questions if necessary. Okay. I will, at this time, I will move to bring this back, move for approval of this request for the, for it to be the workshop. Yeah, for the next workshop.
We have a motion to go second.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Adams to approve the discussion item for the charter review committee at the next workshop. Second by Councilmember Sagara.
Comment.
Comment, Councilmember Boyd.
Comment is, I do believe this is a great initiative, both relevant and timely for the progression of our city. That's all I got.
Received. Five in favor of the motion as presented. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Portem, I move to adjourn.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. A motion and a second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.